That's crazy and expensive. Yeah.
I do have a pair ordered, but having a backup pair may not be a bad idea. So, yeah, I'd be like, I should look into it.
You have to drag him by the arms.
That's worth $200,000 at this particular GoFundMe level.
Sure.
Have you seen it?
No, I haven't seen that.
No, I'm not, yeah, she's up to 200.
Are you kidding me?
So I would like to be arrested in Bonner County with not actually going to jail and go down there and get pulled out of a meeting. That's $400,000.
Yeah.
Setting precedence, more people are gonna start wanting that. That'll be their goal.
Back row there, are we ready? Are we ready? Christian, are you ready? You guys are holding a meeting back there. Are we, are we ready Lisa? All right, it is nine o'clock and we are here for the regularly scheduled business meeting. It appears as if the left side of the room intends to leave very quickly and you guys are staying for the whole meeting, but with that, we will have our invocation. We have nobody here to do our invocation. Did we not have someone scheduled? Does anybody in our audience want to say our prayer? I can't, I'm looking past him. Somebody has to pray. There we go. Go ahead, sir. You have to come to the, come to this microphone here.
This morning, seeking your wisdom and your guidance and turning our issues over to you because we know your will is holy, righteous, and true, and we seek your will in everything we do. In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
All right, please follow in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that, we will review our consent agenda, or adopt the order of the agenda, sorry. We'll entertain a motion at this time.
Based on information before us, I move to adopt the order of agenda as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Seconded.
Any comment from the public on the order of the agenda? Seeing none, any deliberation by the board?
I just have one comment. And it's gonna go back to some previous comments I had as far as, we really, in my opinion, I think we need to have a workshop with RISK. I think you were gonna mail me some stuff yesterday. Uh huh. We're seemingly paying a lot of money out of the county budget for these vehicles that are getting wrecked and stuff, and the way I look at it is, a lot of these things could be avoided, and I'm not sure if there's, I don't know how it's being handled within each department of what happens when you do that.
Can I interrupt you here? That's on the consent agenda, we're on the order of the agenda itself.
The order is fine, thank you.
All right, roll call vote.
Yes.
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 All right, now we're on the consent agenda. Christian, get back in here.
Don't be running away.
All right, we'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented for discussion.
All right, is there a second? All right, now we can talk about that topic. Go ahead, Commissioner Corrigan.
So I would like us to plan a workshop and discuss how we're gonna move forward with paying these claims from different departments. A lot of it is the sheriff's office, but not all of it. Last week, it was Bonner County Ambulance District that we were paying for, but it seems like some of these are, many of these are driver error, the way it seems to be looking, reading these claims. This one here is for like $12,000 to replace a frame on a vehicle that ran over a snowball that was not a snowball, but a rock in a parking lot. I find that a little disturbing myself, why we're doing that. So I would like to schedule a workshop to discuss this moving forward because right now, as it sits, as long as the department head or the elected reports that within 24 hours, I believe is the rule that we have in place, I'm looking for Christian, there he is back there, that the county ends up paying for this, and it seems like almost on a weekly basis, there's 8,000, 12,000, 13,000, 7,000, it's just on and on on a weekly basis, and I think we need to wrangle this in somehow, however we decide to.
Happy to have that discussion, if you'd like to schedule that workshop, I think that'd be a good conversation to have.
Well Lisa, can, we look at the schedule to address how claims are paid, and I, and part of what Commissioner Corrigan is saying is that it's coming out, when we say the county's paying for it, you have different budgets, and so it's coming out of the TORT budget, the RISK budget, and one of the things that it doesn't allow you to do when you do it that way is kind of do the mitigation of how do we reduce kind of those costs, and really to understand how much the individual departments are costing in those claims, because it just kind of gets pulled into his budget and he pays, pays for it. So we can get that workshop scheduled. Any further comments on this?
That's all I have.
Commissioner Donkey?
Christian, I was hoping you might be able to answer. I noted that there was a little over $2,800 listed under the miscellaneous category for this particular repair cost, and I couldn't find the definition of miscellaneous anywhere in the estimate. I was wondering if you know, if I was missing that, where we might get that information. I think we should have itemized costs, not a lump sum category from, from them for the estimate, just so we can confirm that those costs are appropriate. Okay, it's under the estimate totals portion? It's their last itemized, if you would, line before the subtotal and grand total, but I couldn't find any definition for miscellaneous, and that's a lot of expense for miscellaneous items. I can understand, you know, if it was 50 or $100 for some small parts that they may not inventory separately, but that's a lot of expense for an undefined item.
Do you want us to pull that one out until that one is defined?
Yeah, I'd like to see definition of, of the 2,852.50.
And so if the board pulls it out, can you bring it back, and then before putting those types of items into the consent agenda, that we look at the invoice to ensure that they're detailed, and then push them back to the person before it comes to the consent agenda, that way we can pay it promptly? And if we need a quick meeting to address the bill after they give you the information, it's okay not to wait until the Tuesday, but give notice so that we can notice the meeting to address paying the bill, and then maybe, especially since we're regularly using the same person, kind of give the expectation of what we want to see on the most, on those categories and what qualifies for that, so that we don't have to have delays. So what I'd like to do is, the motion that was put forward was to agree with the consent agenda, and I would like to call for a vote so that you kill that motion and then that you re-motion. Is that all right?
Sounds good.
Okay, so roll call vote? No?
No. No.
All right, and so at this time, we'll entertain a motion to amend.
So I, we could just re-motion, I would think, and remove that item from the consent agenda as part of the motion instead of amending?
Well, you're amending, you're amending the consent agenda.
Yeah. So, I was thinking we can do with the approval with the removal of that item, as a single, can we do it as a single motion that way?
Well, they put, so the motion on the item is the consent agenda as given to us, so we're changing what's in the consent agenda by pulling that item out, so we're amending it to move it, and then you'll approve the amendment, because their item, the way it's listed is consent agenda, and we give the packet out. So we're actually changing the consent agenda.
Right.
Because we're taking it out.
We can do the two step.
Yeah.
I move to amend the consent agenda to strike the Northwest Auto Body invoice from RISK, RISK's item.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second that.
All right, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any further deliberation by the board? All right, roll call vote? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Then at this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
There's a motion, is there a second? All right, any comment from the public on this item? Hearing none, any further deliberation by the board? Roll call vote? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, up next is our county clerk. Claims batch.
Good morning, Commissioners, and everybody. Mike Rosedale, County Clerk. Before you, I have fiscal year '25 claims batch number 20 totaling $623,527.31 for your approval. The big ticket items there, we have $445,000 for solid waste, lots of long haul contracts, disposal systems, and we also have $70,000 in medical for Doug Patterson.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion at this time.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve payment of FY '25 claims in batch number 20 totaling $623,527.31.
There's a second? All right, any comment from the public on this item? Any discussion from the board? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Motion passes. Up next is our coroner, who is... And that's different than this one?
It's the attachment C, so it looks like B was attached, but C was not.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have A? A is the actual MOU, from what I understand. Mere Commissioners, this is Robert Beers, Bonner County Coroner. What I brought to you today was the, the new agreement for Spokane County Medical Examiner Services. There's fee schedules there, which is attachment B, attachment C is also another portion of the fee schedules for like written reports and that kind of thing. So, guess have any questions?
So I'm gonna read it so that they know what we're talking about.
Absolutely.
So, description is a memorandum of understanding with Spokane County Medical Examiner's Office, so they can continue to provide forensic pathology services to Bonner County, and so he's providing a fee schedule. So we have an agreement with Spokane for our pathology work that's done. There is a need for pathologists, if you know anybody that wants to go to school for pathology and stay in Bonner County. All right. At this time, before I ask for the motion, did you guys want to ask questions about what the coroner provided to you?
No, I don't have questions on the content, I was just checking the format of how they constructed the agreement.
So the C exhibit that he just handed us, that fee type, it says legal consultation fees, I'm assuming that's for lawyers?
Exactly, so if we call him in to testify in court and that kind of thing, whether it's, you know, virtual or in person, yes.
Any questions, Commissioner Donkey?
One moment, please. I'm just... Just the format of this one is a little unique from what I'm used to with the attachment structure. So, okay, so I see now, so attachment C, so they broke their fees into two separate attachments, which is fine, it's not what I'm used to, but it's, doesn't matter. So, okay. Makes sense to me now, I needed a moment, it's...
Oh yeah, absolutely. So attachment B actually has kind of like more
Medical.
Defined information for like what you're paying for, as far as like a basic autopsy versus, you know, even a cranial autopsy, you know, that's all added in there, whereas this here, attachment C is also other, you know, typical things like legal fees and that kind of thing.
Yeah, I'm actually glad to see that some of their reports and documentation costs are really reasonable as compared to what other types of entities might charge, so that's nice to see. Okay. I don't have any questions then, thank you.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the agreement for Medical Examiner Services as presented.
Seconded.
All right, any comment from the public on this item? All right, any deliberation by the board, questions by the board on this item? Hearing none, roll call vote? Oh wait, let me pause, wait, wait. Mr. Lady just raised his hand. Mr. Lady, please state his name and county of residence, please.
Thank you, Mr. Lady, Spokane. Just curious, is this a one-time fee, or is this like a standard fee of how much you'll pay for autopsy? Kind of concerned if autopsies are not being done because of trying to keep price down, how does that work?
This particular item is just addressing the agreement, the memorandum between Spokane and Bonner County. It's, it's not, it's, it's what the fees are related to autopsies.
So it has a fee schedule for each type of service?
Bill Wilson has a comment?
Yeah, Commissioners, in this, I'll address Mr. Lady's question as well. I've worked on tweaking this agreement with my counterpart in Spokane County for the last couple of weeks. This is basically the same exact agreement we've had with them for a very long time, but I had never been responsible for reviewing it for this year, and when I did come across my desk, I realized that there was one additional step that we needed to be following with the Idaho Secretary of State. So, to his question, this is, yeah, this is not something where we're committing funds, it's just a schedule of values, and then what'll happen after the board hopefully approves this agreement is that it'll also be presented to the Commissioners in Spokane County, and then finally, we will send that approved agreement to the Idaho Secretary of State for review, so it'll get multiple layers of review. I don't anticipate any challenges, but just to let him know, this is an agreement with minor tweaks that we've had with this, this medical examiner in Spokane County for a long, long time.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, deliberation by the board. Bill, I had, I did have a question on this. Do we have to do those attachments about, is real with something like this? Because that, I didn't see.
No, I don't think so. This is a, this is what we call a JPA or a joint powers agreement, so it's not, I don't think it falls under the same purview, or under the same rules that we would ordinarily use those, that language for, and so we didn't include that. So no, that's the answer to the question. Like I said, the real legal question here is whether or not it needed to be reviewed by the Secretary of State, that's what was hanging us up with, with our Spokane County partners, and so we've, that's what it took to iron out.
So, because I want to clarify on the question I asked, this type of MOU doesn't have the requirement that we add those attachments to the agreement between Bonner County. Is your answer, no? Okay, thank you. That was my only question on that. All right, any further questions from the board on this item? All right, roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Coroner.
You're welcome, and I just wanted, one more brief comment. So with regard to these fees, these aren't like, I mean, they haven't changed their prices in, I think it's been about four or five years. So I always warn the Commissioners, they've increased prices mid-budget cycle for us before, so I'm just letting you know that even though this price is here, it doesn't mean that they may not increase them mid-budget cycle for us and have to attach a new fee schedule. I'll let you guys know, of course, when that happens, but just so you guys are aware, it's happened before.
Thank you.
And I can, one, one point to follow up on that. I also communicated with the prosecutor's office in Cootney County, because they have to negotiate this, this same agreement with Spokane County as well, but Cootney County is in the process of constructing its own facility that will be able to, to provide all of these same services. It's possible in the near to intermediate future that we may end up being able to have this type of agreement with Cootney County instead of Spokane, which may be beneficial to us in some way.
It may be. I want to give a, just a small disclaimer on that comment is, the pathologists are, it's a very significant specialty, and that's one where the coroner is doing his due diligence to ensure that if in, Cootney County does move in that direction, that it's beneficial to Bonner County, because it is possible that Bonner County says that it's not beneficial and that we would stick with Spokane pathology. So I don't want it to be put out there, because I've had that conversation with our coroner, so don't think that when Cootney County gets a pathologist that we would see a shift, because we may not see that shift. So I want to give that disclaimer, and since he's nodding his head, so you guys all see that, it's accurate comment. So, I don't, I don't want to guarantee that's where we're going, because we may not go there. He said 100%, it wasn't even a little bit off. All right, next item, Sheriff Wheeler.
Good morning, Commissioners, Sheriff Darryl Wheeler for the record. This morning, we are bringing this item, the Bonner County Sheriff's Office is requesting approval to enter into an agreement with the Idaho Sheriff's Connect for the period of one year, renewable annually thereafter, to build and maintain the mobile app in the amount of $8,467.25. The cost will be divided between the Sheriff's Office, jail, Marine Division, and dispatch. The Bonner County Sheriff's Office has adequate funds in its Sheriff's Patrol Miscellaneous Express account, and the jail has adequate money in his jail miscellaneous expenses, and the Marine Division has adequate funds in its account for marine miscellaneous expenses, and dispatch likewise, and their miscellaneous expense to purchase this app. I should note that there has been very, several questions about data mining, and over the last few weeks, I've produced and sent emails with that information, and I sent another one yesterday, who, and this email was from Kevin Cummings from the Sheriff's App, and I'd just like to read it, I think it's beneficial to the citizens and those who are listening online. Sheriff Wheeler, we appreciate the opportunity to clarify how data is handled within the Idaho Sheriff's Connect app, specifically regarding user privacy and security. First and foremost, OCV, LCC does not share, sell, or mine data. The only data collected is anonymous usage information to help the Bonner County Sheriff's Office improve its services and ensure the app remains as useful as possible to the community. Addressing key concerns, no data, no personal data collected or stored. The app does not require account registration, meaning no personally identified information is provided by or stored at an end user. And where is data stored and security measures? Any limited anonymous user data is secured, stored using Amazon Web Services, AWS, a highly secure, industry standard cloud platform. And as far as anonymous tips submission, if the app includes any anonymous tip feature, any submissions are routed directly to the Sheriff's Office or designated third-party tip service as defined by the department using this app and does not process or store that data. In compliance with App Store policies, when releasing app on the Apple Store or Google Play, we are required to accurately disclose how data is handled, and if we were to misrepresent our data practices, the app could be removed by these platforms. The privacy details for Idaho Sheriff's Connect are provided, are publicly listed and reflect those. And I should note that when, the app will be set up at my request, that there will be a form set up on the app, and anonymously somebody can fill in if they want name, they can do it anonymously, if, they can fill in the tip, and then that tip is sent to a designated email with the Sheriff's Office. So if somebody wants to give, provide their name and address and contact, they can. If they don't, they're not, and there's no data collected by anybody that can be, can mine that data.
Sheriff Wheeler, before we go to public comment, can I ask you to address some things that people brought forward? One of them was on the Vine, one of the features says that when somebody is going to give a tip, that the history on the device that they were using doesn't allow you to see that someone went on that application, so that it protects the person in case it was a, the example someone gave was like in a domestic violence situation, if someone were to use the app, that the search history goes away, you can't, the person wouldn't have a search history. Would that exist with this particular app? Does that protection exist?
You mean the person sending have a search history, or us?
The person sending the search.
I can't tell you if they do or not, I know it's up to the person if they send it. You know, we're, we are, we are not forcing people to use that app, somebody can, we have a tip line that somebody can call in also.
Right.
And not be, be recorded, but have, make an anonymous tip. So you would have to ask the particular provider if that's saved on their app. I mean, that's really getting deep in the weeds.
And it was something someone said that they thought had deleted, so I thought I'd ask, and the second one someone brought up was, can you explain why we need that if we have Vine? And what is the gap that says, let's do another ones? That, that was a, quite a few people asked.
Vine, oh, well Vine is a separate, Vine is something, is, is a service provided by the Idaho Sheriff's Association. So when you have somebody who is a victim of a crime, and they want to follow the suspect in that crime, whether going through the court services and going through prison, and when they're getting out, it's an application that you sign up and you are notified by that organization, which is run by the Sheriff's Association, when that person has a court date, when they're getting released, and has, it's totally separate from the app. What this app does is it makes it accessible to everyone with that app. If they're checking to see who's in custody and they see, oh, there's John Doe, oh, he's, well I'm afraid of him and he's threatening my family, at that instance, you can take that app and, app and sign up for the Vine program, be notified by a phone number, an address, or by letter, by some, some mechanism, and you can automatically do that rather than getting on another app or, and to log into, to the Vine program. So it becomes a real convenience for the people that are living in Bonner County.
Thank you, I wanted you to explain the difference between, because people have asked about that, so that they understand why you're asking for the application itself, because some people thought that was duplic-
The app, that is just one benefit of the app. You can, they will add apps and build different resources in there at the same price, they don't charge us for that, that's for that same price. So we will, we'll be giving notifications, as I said before in the last couple of weeks. If I have a deputy that's out on the scene and, and the road's blocked, instead of going to, to go to Nixel, they, if somebody has that app, they can snap a picture of the closed roadway, of the wrecked cars, or whatever, they can put that on the app and immediately send that out and say that, and then we're, and then we're, we'll double that, we'll actually take that information and put it out on Nixel also, for those that don't have the app, because they're- and put it out on Nixle also, for those that don't have the app, because there are people that won't have both.
Right.
So it's a redundancy, and it's a convenience for those that are visiting and living in Bonner County.
Okay, thank you. All right. With that, we'll entertain a motion at this time, unless further. Do you guys have questions you want to ask him to explain before we go for a motion on it?
Only thing I'd like to ask is, so if we move forward with this app, could we expect more information on that app on incidences than we get on Nixle? Because Nixle is very limited information that we get.
Yeah. Nixle is only limited to so many characters, and it has to be crafted in such a way. We can send paragraphs and paragraphs and paragraphs. You're going to find that the folks that are visiting Bonner County, and the ones that live here, will have better access to what's happening pertaining to the sheriff's office, because the reason for this is, we want the people to know what's going on. If there is, if there's crime happening, if there's things that would be concerning, we can put out fraud alerts immediately, every day, instead of posting it on Facebook or Nixle. It's just going to be a very convenient way for the sheriff's office to communicate to the public.
And to clarify further than Sheriff, if I'm hearing correctly, the intent would be that this would be leveraged on top of the other resources, like Nixle, the Facebook page, and Vine. So you're trying to create broader access?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So broader access to the citizens for information?
Yes.
So then, this is, the intent is to enhance accessibility to improve health, safety, and welfare for the community? Is that the overall?
Correct.
Plan? Okay. Appreciate that clarification.
I'll make the motion. Based on the information before us, I move to accept and approve the agreement. I further move for the chairwoman to sign the advanced document administratively.
Seconded.
All right. Discussion, public comment. So let's go, Ms. Heiser.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Teresa Heiser, Priest River. Sheriff, I wanted to expand on what the commissioner said regarding more knowledge to the citizens. Will you be posting, like, the crime logs? Like, I think it's a city map, with the crimes is really kind of a peta. So as you get calls in, let's say someone's reporting a drug deal at the church, will all those calls be available on the app?
So I can talk to the developer about putting a link in there to crime data and crime work. That is a tool that we have on our website already, and we can develop that. But we don't have the resources of the time to let the county and the residents know every crime and everything that's happening. I mean, we just don't have somebody that can do that. You're going to get a lot more information about what's happening in the county through this app. But I don't know if we're going to get to that amount of detail that you want.
Okay. And asking, as a team captain for the neighborhood watch, I know in San Bernardino County, they would just release the whole crime log onto the SO website, so it was really handy. You could see if there was a burg, you know, down the street, or just, there may be an easy way to get that data over to the app. But it would be great if we could. So thank you.
We could probably check, because we release that data to the newspapers every day. So there may be a way that we can do a link to that and do that.
Maybe a way to do kind of a summary update of what's going on in the county at our business meetings as a whole, kind of a report up. Mr. Martin, or Mrs. Martin, who's ever behind that one?
Wayne Martin, for the record, Bonner County.
Thank you.
I am very positively for this app. I have gotten notifications from other counties in Idaho that utilize it. It seems to be very applicable and timely on the responses. A concern that I would have, if something is put on the app, that Teresa was talking about as a watch captain, getting an immediate notification, it's not going to stop the bad people from downloading this app. So if the sheriff officer is responding, or somehow that gets put out on the app, that burglar or whatever is going to have a quicker knowledge that there is a response coming. So that would be a concern that I have on something being put on there. But other than that, it does work in the other counties, and seems to be working very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Wayne, there was no instance that we'd ever do that, put that kind of information on the app.
Right. That's what I understand. But the way I took what Teresa was talking about, it sounded like that's what she was hoping for, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Martin. I know Teresa wants to clarify what she said, but let me go to Mr. Lady, and then I'll come back to you to clarify.
Thank you. Jim Leedy, Spokane. I feel like it should be a policy written regarding the app and who has access to it, and that the policy should be made publicly available. That way, we know the rules around using the app, and we can ensure safety for that. Also, I'm curious if there will be exemptions for particular notifications that will be published, so we know what is exempt from being put on. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa, do you want to clarify?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. No, I wasn't talking real-time data. Of course, we don't want to release that information. It's never okay. This is like day-old data, just as so the watch captains and the citizens can know, hey, there was a burglary next door yesterday. So I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ray Ford, please state your name and county of residence. Going once.
Sir, you need to unmute?
Going twice. Usually they get it. There you go. All right, go ahead, Mr. Ford. We can't hear you.
Could you move closer to your microphone, sir?
Okay. It looks like he can't hear us either. Alisa, can you go back and mute him? And then we can go on. Any further public comment on this item?
Jeff Armstrong, Bonner County resident, also fire chief. So I support the efforts of Sheriff Wheeler for any transparency information out to public. There are a couple other apps, and I apologize, I'm looking, so I didn't say the wrong name. I'd like to remind Sheriff Wheeler that he also dispatches for EMS and fire. And oftentimes, things are very law-centric, which is good, but there are multiple aspects of public safety. PulsePoint, as well as, so I get it right, Smart 911, both apps that are really good. PulsePoint is focused on real-time data, letting people know what's going on. Obviously, everything that's gone on in the country and the nation, we understand. Large incidents occur, impact the public. Specifically, PulsePoint is more EMS-centric, and that's something that I would like to collaborate on in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Hearing none. Deliberation by the board?
I'd also like to state, for updated information, at the last meeting, based on new information we had from the app developer, I had asked for legal review. So to bring everyone up to speed, we did get a review from our prosecutor's office, and they indicated that after reviewing the end-user agreement and the privacy policy, that they didn't have concerns, and they found both to be acceptable. So to bring an update full circle under the request that I had made. So with that recognition, I have no further comments or questions.
I'd like to make a comment. It was noted in that legal reply back to you from Bill Wilson, there are other apps that other departments are using that are data mining, that they are going into the computer and finding out what your IP address is, what kind of system you're using. So I'm hoping that you continue. If you are concerned, not just with me, but the other county apps that are being used, and that you go and scrutinize those, just as you have mine.
And I think that's what this board is doing, because our community has that concern of data retention. And so taking, I think for everybody, can see that this board has been not automatically renewing contracts, but looking at what's been written, and making sure that they're in line with the values of the Bonner County residents that we represent. And concurrently in this item, recognizing the authority of the sheriff to address the needs of the public, while making sure the contract is in line. So sometimes it doesn't happen the day it comes through, but the purpose of this board, I think that we've been really good at looking at things, not just automatically approving it, so that when we do say we approve it, that we can say we read it and address the concerns of the public while we did so.
Sheriff, I will clarify that I even had a member of the public reach out to me about this topic. And so that you know, and the public knows, to me, it's incremental improvement. So every time something new comes before us, it's an opportunity to take a hard look, ask the right questions, and make an informed decision. So it's not about singling out any person or any item, but just to have whatever we think is the appropriate level of scrutiny as each item comes before us. And so through that process of asking these questions, and asking for the legal review, both your comment and another public comment has asked that we look at other aspects of the county with technology, and how end-user data is or is not being utilized. And so I've already started the process of investigating that with our technology director. And so he's already beginning to dig into that and provide more information. So as we have more, I intend to bring that forward to the board for consideration. But please understand, it's not about singling out any one issue or individual. It's about saying, we have something before us. So I just want to make the best possible decision we can on that topic. So appreciate it.
Any further comments from the board?
None.
Hearing none. Roll call vote? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Bye. Thank you, Sheriff. Assistant Director Fain.
Bahia del Sol. Yes, ma'am. Alex Fain, Planning Staff. So before you is the same memorandum we had last week regarding Bahia del Sol, first edition. The board requested more information regarding the conditions of approval. So in this memorandum, I included the decision letter that was administered to the applicant's representative on January 2nd with the conditions of approval. And the applicant has satisfied all of these conditions of approval. The biggest condition of approval typically with these is for completing improvements. But that is also addressed in this memorandum, that the applicant's engineer provided a cost estimate, and it was reviewed by the county engineers, and they've provided a surety agreement and a bond for 150% of the improvements, in accordance with the surety agreement conditions and final plat approval. And I can answer any questions, if you have any for me.
As a clarifying point, I did look at the staff report that includes the staff review and analysis checklist. And so for the board and the public, if anyone else hasn't yet looked at that, you can see through that checklist that if an item is shown not to be in conformance, not applicable, or even sometimes if it is in conformance with that checklist, there are notes about to look at the conditions of approval. And so if something is going to be addressed in a future manner, or through another approach, then, or if there was an extenuating circumstance, such is the case of the wetlands having been shown on a national map, but then having been delineated by a specialist and found to have none on the property, and then the Army Corps updated their opinion and said that there was no wetlands. That's why, when you look at a checklist, sometimes a checked box cannot be simply understood just by looking at the check mark, which you have to look at the details behind it. So for those that were curious and interested in these processes, it's important to look at those details. And so if you look at those conditions of approval, then you can go back to see how the approval was granted, and then you can look at the information with the plat to see how it carries through. So.
Do you have any questions for Alex before we go for a motion?
Hi, Joe.
All right. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the surety agreement between Bonner County and Darwin W. Brown and Carolyn J. Brown for Bahia del Sol, first edition, and the amount shown for the completion of the improvements shown in the engineer's cost estimate, and further approve the final plat for Bahia del Sol, first edition, planning file number SS 0002-24, and authorize the chair to sign the final plat.
Seconded.
All right. We'll go for a public comment on this item. Seeing no public comment, deliberation by the board. For me, I think Commissioner Donkey summarized this one well, that all of the conditions have been met. And I think it's a good pointer to, when you look at the checklist, you have to actually read the report to find the conditions of approval. And when you look through it, you can see that those conditions support what the staff recommendation is in this case. So thank you. Any further comments? All right. Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Commissioners.
And fire was specifically addressed on this one, fire hydrants. All right. Noxious Weeds, Director Youngdoll.
For the record, I'm Chase Youngdoll, Bonner County Noxious Weeds Director. Commissioners, I've got two agenda items on the slate for you this morning. They are mutually dependent items. So should you approve the first one, we'll go ahead and take up the second one.
Okay.
So item number one is a proposed budget transfer resolution that would shift $15,947 from the A category into the B category. And just for the benefit of the public, A budget categories are for salaries, and B budget categories are for operating expenses. And the reason for this request is, my longtime seasonal technician has decided that he's ready to be fully retired, and evidently, traveling all summer has more appeal than working all summer. So upon confirming that information, an idea that I generated that would also tie into some of my long-term planning for the department, is to outsource a portion of the field operations to an experienced contractor, rather than going through the recruitment process, crossing my fingers that I could get a quality individual that I could trust to work a few months of the year, and who is also competent enough to pass the professional applicator license exams, which are no picnic. And then even if that all came together for me, it would still require an immense amount of my time on the ground with a Green Horn, trying to get them trained and up to speed in order to carry out the duties independently. So being in an oversight role with a private contractor, who's already, carries the applicable licensing, already experienced in the work, would then allow, you know, me the time to be able to improve other areas of the department that I've identified for being areas for improvement. And then in order to pay contractors, that's out of professional services line items, which is housed in the B category, hence the resolution before you right now. So that, I go ahead and turn it over for questions.
So I'd just like you to confirm that shifting from Bonner County hiring personnel to using professional services, that the budget will allow for that completely, and is that the new direction of the department to maintain, is no seasonal, but outsourcing that, and that the funds would be available, that that's enough of the funds for professional services?
Pretty close. It's, I mean, if we get to the second item, I would go into it a little bit more, but it'd be basically net neutral on the budget. What would pick up the minimal amount of difference would be what we would save on fuel. So yes, it's...
So the budget allows for this adjustment?
It does.
Do we have a little bit of room for, it might cost a little bit more with professional services available, if that is the case?
Not with the quote that I received. It all worked out, then, as far as I could tell, to be net neutral on the Noxious Weeds budget.
All right. Thank you.
To clarify that comment, Director, is that by addressing both the personnel cost shift, as well as the fact that the professional service would provide their own equipment and materials? Is that how the neutral cost, the net neutral ends up working out?
They would provide their own personnel and equipment. We would still provide the herbicides and surfactants, being that I can procure those at state bid pricing, rather than having, rather than having to...
Better value then?
Yes.
And there's a reduction in travel for an employee going off to a location And there's a reduction in travel for an employee going off to a location. I think that's part of it. I just wanted to make sure.
I was asking because there's about a $2,100 difference between the personnel cost and the total cost on the next item. So I wanted to understand where that 2,100 comes from.
Fuel.
Fuel. Thank you.
So I got a question. So it sounds like, and you can clarify that the person that was hired seasonally, they did the Noxious Weeds spraying in the past.
Right.
Did they have any other duties besides that, or was that their sole purpose of being employed temporarily?
They also helped me out on the small infestation projects, which pertain to the early detection rapid response species that we receive, state cost share funding to carry out. And a lot of that, since we have an MOU to work with various agencies, IDL, the Forest Service, Stimson, et cetera, I could utilize, you know, help from, from those agencies, then through the MOU on, on some of the other areas where I had my seasonal tech helping me out.
So this won't create a shortfall on...
It shouldn't. It's gonna, I mean, it's gonna take me going through a season to really get a feel for it, but as far as I can tell, I, I think it should be fine.
Okay.
Should we leave the idea open that you might decide after we try it that we'd like to go back to seasonal? Is that a possibility? This is a trial?
A trial, one-year trial, and then, yes.
Just want to have it in our mind, if that's what you're thinking, because we're coming up on budget, budget time.
Right, right. And that's, and should this all go forward, then my FY '26 proposed budget would look a little bit different. But I would want to get through the 2025 season and evaluate, just to make sure that I'm satisfied with the performance of outsourcing, and I'm okay as far as my workload.
And I think that points to Commissioner Donkey's comment about the shortfall of making sure we can ensure that it's net neutral.
Yeah, I think if we maintain that in the upcoming budget, then we can support the idea that this is a testing ground to see if this approach is actually a better one. And then if we decide it's not, then we still have everything, even if we just have to move between A and B budget, at least if our total budget allocations are there.
Right.
Then we have the ability to move back in case, like Commissioner Corn's comment, if we decide that, you know, you really needed to have that seasonal staff member to assist you in other ways still, then we'd have, we'd have the option without having to allocate additional funds that are now missing.
Right.
Are we good with questions, David? Do you want to entertain a motion?
Based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-15, authorizing the clerk to open the Noxious Weeds A budget and transfer from 027-6090 part-time salaries to the B budget and increase line item 027-7110 professional services by $15,947.
Seconded.
All right, there's a motion, a second. Any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none, any further deliberation by the board?
None.
All right, roll call vote.
Commissioner Donkey?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, next item.
Okay, so the second item, as I'd indicated earlier, directly ties into the first item. It's a, an agreement for roadside spraying services for 2025. So I had put together a solicitation packet, included a general scope of work, a description of the project, my technical specifications and location of the project, sent that out to three regional service providers, gave them a period of three weeks, then to submit a quote back to me. And the lowest quote that I fielded, based on the information that I sent out, was from Custom Spray Service at a rate of $45.19 per lane mile. And in the project, I've got a tentative total of 400 lane miles to be treated in 2025. So it would be a total project amount not to exceed $18,076. And since we have the 15, 947 shifted over from the A, as, as we'd already talked about, the remaining 2,200-ish would be picked up from the fuel savings. And...
I thank you for getting more than one quote, so that we could see what our availability is, because that's something I think that this board values, is seeing more than one person quote. So thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely. And I had, so I had taken the, the content from my specifications and description and the project, plugged it into a stock service agreement, and then included the boilerplate content, which is just the standard can terms that all political subdivisions in Idaho are required to have in all contracts. And I included the full solicitation packet as an appendix on your guys' packets, just so you have, just so you're aware of the entire proposed project. And I did run this through the full battery of reviews, being that there was an insurance component for risk to look at, a billing and payment component for auditing to look at, and then, of course, legal, being that it's a legal document. So...
Good job, thank you.
Yes, with that, I'll go ahead and turn this one over.
Any questions from the board?
I do have one. I appreciate the thoroughness, Director. So when it comes to, this is a broader question about the application aspect, not about the contract itself, but what notification process does the county use to make landowners aware when the spraying is going to occur? And then what process do they utilize to opt out?
So we've got, so we're bound by statute to run a public notice in a newspaper of record between the period of March 1st and April 30th. So I run that then in the Bonner County Daily Bee. And being that this project specifically would be in District 2, then for the 2025 season, I would generally run a notice in the River Valley Beacon, just to cover the basis. And I've also got it posted at my office. I've got it posted on the website.
Does that notice include the opt-out instructions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's, and the opt-out is, they have to enter into an agreement that Commissioners approved years ago. It's in a resolution form where they agree to control any state-listed noxious weeds that are subject to the IDAPA rule under the Noxious Weed statute. And they're given a period of time to perform those mitigation measures themselves before we come in operationally and, and take care of it.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
So this looks like it's in District 2 only?
Yes.
So can you just explain briefly how that works? I'm assuming we do the whole county, and I'm assuming that it's on a rotational basis. How effective is that at mitigating the, the weeds, the noxious weeds, when you're doing it once every three years?
It is effective, and that's why we're able to perform these operations on a rotational basis, being that the majority of the chemistries that we use have pre-emergent properties, which not only inhibits weed growth that you see, but it also inhibits future propagation until that ground becomes disturbed. So that's, the closer you get to the road surface, the, the more important it is to, for the application, since that's where seeds are being deposited from vehicles and picked up and tracked by vehicles, where you get further out into where the perennial grasses are, are thicker. And that provides for competition for future noxious weed infestations, of which we've got a lot of that caught up. So...
Any further clarifications?
No, thank you.
All right, well, at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the agreement with Custom Spray Services to assist the Noxious Weeds Department in carrying out roadside spraying operations in 2025 at the rate of $45.19 per lane mile.
Seconded.
All right, any questions from the public on this item? Seeing none, further deliberation by the board?
None.
I just want to say I super like the way you presented it. It was very thorough and very easy to follow, and you checked off not just the concerns of the board, but the public with your presentation. So thank you for that.
Yeah, that was my, that was the goal. Thank you.
All right, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donkey?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Matt Mulder, roads, in case anybody has comments on roads, that's what's coming up next. But we have to restrict to just the agenda items. I understand roads are changing at this very moment, but when we say public comment, it's on the item that he's presenting, not on the flow of water that's happening at this time.
There's plenty out there.
Yes, all right, sir.
Matt Mulder, engineer for the Road and Bridge Department, for the record. The age-old question everybody wants to know is, when is my road going to get paved? And for a few roads, we have some answers to that today. So we are requesting the board's approval to advertise for bids for the Bonner County Asphalt Projects 2025. This will place new asphalt in the following locations: Bay Road and Edgemere Road, Monarch Road in Sagal, Spades Road in Sagal, South Center Valley Road, North Center Valley Road, and the short section of Center Valley Road between those two, East River Road up at the north end at Coolin, and Substation Cut Off Road, and then a reconstruction of Garfield Bay Road, which is already hard asphalt surface. Funds for these are going to come mostly from our unanticipated revenue that we got this year from the state, to the tune of about $3.9 million. So I, I know none of us like paying gas taxes and registration fees, but this is how they come directly back to us from the state and allows us to do these kind of projects. So keep that in mind next time you're paying those, please. With that, I'll turn it over to the board.
All right, any questions from the board before we go for a motion?
Uh, no question. I have a statement. I, I do, I do support the gas tax, like, every day with my diesel guzzler. None of these roads I'm going to be driving on, probably, but that's all right.
Any questions on that?
For clarification, because I have had some public questions about how the county prioritizes and decides what roads are going to get paved in, in a given year, I just wanted to clarify, please confirm that these proposed project locations are based on the county's current transportation plan. So if folks want to look, they can go and see that we have a five-year plan. Every five years of the transportation plan that looks at the assessment of roads. So that transportation plan is something I would consider to be foundational. And then there are some sort of day-to-day tactical decision-making that happens around current conditions and where we have increased traffic paths and things of that nature. Are you guys trying to...
Exactly, right.
...enhance connectivity across an area where it's starting to be paved, but it hasn't been finished yet? But if you could just clarify that, I think the public would appreciate understanding how this list will achieve.
Sure. Yeah, so the 2023 was when we last updated our five-year transportation plan, and all of these projects are listed in that. There are a lot of criteria that go into prioritizing those projects in the plan. The traffic counts is probably the biggest driver. Those roads that have 800 cars a day on gravel are really hard to keep in passable condition. And so those tend to get, get the highest prioritization. In selecting the final list, a lot of it comes down to just fitting projects into the budget. We've got, you know, a few high priorities that we want to do, and, okay, with the money remaining, what else can we fit in here that kind of rounds out that available budget for this year? So not all of them are the high priorities listed in the transportation plan. Some of them are medium and, and/or low priorities as well. So...
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
And people can find the five-year plan on the Road and Bridge page, which is helpful to see how they come up with what they're going to work on. And if you like to participate with their meetings, they actually also give a good update on the roads and conditions. So, all right, anything else, Commissioners? All right, we'll entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve this notice of advertisements for the Bonner County Asphalt Projects 2025.
Seconded.
All right, questions from the public? Mr. Martin?
On the paving, Bay Road, there are two sections that are dirt. There's a middle section that is paved. First question is, is that going to be both of those unpaved sections that are under this proposal? And the second is, and I think it relates to it, in my opinion, Bay is paved up to or around the railroad track, but it's not from the railroad track, Bay, Edgemere section, up to the Spirit Lake section. And is that in any way under or in consideration? And I'm sorry, there's a third one. There are two culverts on Bay that, one is, is showing signs of potential failure, and the other one, not as bad. Are those anywhere going to be affecting that paving? Thank you.
All right.
And so we are not going to be overlaying the existing asphalt sections. This will just be new asphalt over the gravel sections. And, and there is kind of a patch mark of areas that are paved in there right now. The, so it'll be continuous pavement all the way from DuFert Road down to Spirit Lake, including the Edgemere Cut Off Section. We replaced one of the big culverts last year in anticipation for this project coming. We've been looking at some of the others and whether they need to be done. There, there's cost to benefit of, you know, does the culvert have 20 or more years of life left in it? Should we replace it now? If it has more than 20 years of life remaining, then the road is likely going to need to be resurfaced at that point, when the culvert needs to be repaired anyway. So, but certainly anything that is in dire need of replacing, we definitely want to do those now, is the right time, before there's asphalt down.
It, it's accurate to say that you guys assessed the culverts when you were looking at this patch project. So if there was one that was failing, that needed to be replaced, you would have addressed that before doing that at this juncture.
Yeah, we try and stay a year ahead of all of the projects that we think might be on our radar, and, and replace those culverts a year in advance where possible.
Sounds good. Ms. Heisner?
Good morning, Heisner, Priest River. My question is, so East River Road is a continuation of Peninsula Road, which has become a nuisance road in the county. It is the secondary road to Priest Lake. And with all of the new development and the new population growth, and it's a high area of recreation all seasons, I really hope you take into consideration keeping the speed limit. It's 35 in some sections and 45 in other. And I can testify, because I live on Peninsula Road, that we have people coming through here in excess of 75 to 100 miles an hour. It's becoming a dangerous road. I've tried to get the sheriff out here to shoot radar, but, you know, we're understaffed in the sheriff's department as well. So I really hope that's taken into consideration going forward and, and finishing that pavement, because that is going to increase the traffic flow, which has already increased dramatically. My other thing I'm noticing in the last couple of years is what I consider excessive sanding. I've already, I know this is off-topic a little bit, but you will be sanding the heck out of it once that's finished. So it's just kind of an oxymoron to me. You guys paved these roads, and then sanding is so bad, it's like the roads don't even look like they're paved anymore. And it's, that is also becoming a nuisance. So maybe we need to offer some driving courses for the newbies. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further public comment? All right, any further deliberation by the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Corns?
Yes.
Commissioner Donkey?
Yes.
Yes. All right, next item, pavement markings.
So Road and Bridge requests approval to advertise for bid proposals for centerline striping. And rather than just doing the low bid dollar amount this year, we're changing it up and going after bid proposals, which is described in Idaho Code 67-2806A. And as such, the lowest price is not the sole determining factor in who is awarded these bids. It's been made clear to us with problems we've had in recent years, that the low bid is not always the best cost, most effective product for Bonner County. And so we're going to change that up this year and be able to account for things such as contractor performance in the past, the performance of the product, and other advances and advantages that one contractor may have over another. And in doing this, we'll have a team of Bonner County employees that evaluate these proposals that the contractors provide to us, and, and come up with a score and a recommendation for award. Also, as part of this, we are going to have a four-year renewal option. So it's a lot of work to go through the proposals, rather than just opening up a low bid price. And so if we are liking the product and performance of a contractor, we'll have the option to come back to the board annually with a change order to extend that contract up to four years. And this has been approved by legal, and we've done that on our liquid asphalt projects. And you'll see that as the next item, is renewing that contract. So...
That's intended.
So one...
Thank you.
One of the things that the community should also get to hear is, when we were talking about striping on the wonderful DuFert designs we were drawing out there, Road and Bridge did their due diligence and got our money back. And so this also prevents us having to waste our time arguing with someone and delaying. And some people had issues with the spilling of that paint actually created some issues with visibility and driving on their own. And then we used a blackout marker, and it looked even more... And then we used a blackout marker and it looked even more interesting. But in part, that's what they're addressing is, they had, they, they did their due diligence to tell the person, you know, you guys have this error, you need, you're responsible. And in this method, it will allow more control on our end to not say, don't just give us a low bid so we get low quality, but we need the right quality for residents, because the amount of time that people didn't have the striping on that centerline is a risk to our population, because that road needs that centerline, not the, whatever the design was they were making out there. So thank you for that effort.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'll, I'll also just echo the fact that I think this is a far better approach. My professional experience, this performance and qualifications along with price are kind of a three-legged stool to selecting good contractors. Low bid, not always, but tends to lead to low quality. And so I think this is a good balance of long-term fiduciary responsibility for the county to get quality products at a reasonable price, because we have to look at lifecycle costs and not just upfront costs. So I think this is a really smart plan.
Matt, do these bids cost us anything?
Just my time, mostly. And we have to pay the legal advertisement fees in the newspaper, but it's, it's not a huge upfront cost just to get the bids or the proposals.
Can I ask that when we put this out to bid, that we can have an option on the paint itself, just so that the board can compare prices on our lovely water-based paint versus maybe an upgraded oil-based paint, just so that we would have a better understanding of what the difference is? Driving home last night in the rain, I can't see any stripes. So I would just like to see, how much more are we looking at for a better quality paint that either one would be more visible or two would have a longer lifespan?
Yeah, certainly, there are a lot of options out there. Rather than oil-based, it'd be solvent-based, because you need it to be quick drying, and oil doesn't do that so well. But there, there are a lot of options for what's called MMA. It's got the glass beads in it that hold up really well. You get durability of like up to 10 years from some of that, but it's very expensive, of course. And then our five-year chip seal cycle, then you're chip sealing over the top of striping that still has, you know, five years left of life remaining. So that's one of the reasons why we've trended towards the shorter lifespan paints, is just so that we're not paying, chip sealing over the top of these and wasting our money in that regard. But yeah, after, at the end of the second year, when we're due to come back on that road, they are pretty faint, particularly on high-traffic roads and corners. It's certainly something that we could look at to have some options for some longer-lasting paints, yeah.
Sounds like if we, to Commissioner Corn's point, if there was a product that maybe offered more of a three-to-five-year lifecycle versus only a two-year lifecycle, then we could weigh again what the total lifecycle cost is and how it works into the larger improvement plan, because of the fact that you guys are going back over surfaces at times. I know it, it adds complexity to the planning, but I think it would be a worthy consideration, so. But to your point, you have a level of knowledge about what some of those cycles look like for how roads are being maintained. And so if there's a particular lifespan of a higher-quality product that fits in that cycle, then maybe that being the second option, Commissioner Corn, would that meet your intent? If we had two options to choose from for cost and quality that work within all of the other lifecycle considerations that they're looking at?
And even, not even so that we can pick one or the other, just so that we are informed moving forward, that we may be able to budget further down the road for better paint if that would make more sense.
Can I clarify that? Because they're, they're specific in what they're actually wanting to do a proposal for. And in some of what's being said is, let's do some education on paint itself and the options in a little bit of a presentation, because the paint from Road and Bridge, it's not just, uh, paint. It's the paint that impacts the other types of projects that then overlay the striping. And so is that, are you guys asking for a different pavement marking bid proposal advertisement? Because they have a specific advertisement which isn't including that. And so if that's the, the request, then that would be a different motion. And then that would be one where it would re, because in part of what Matt has said is, a higher quality lasts longer, and essentially, you're paving over money when you come to your asphalt cycle.
Possibly. Depends on how those cycles overlap or not.
And so I think that, so his answer is saying that the reason he's using the type that's being recommended is based on other projects within, so that we're not wasting money on a higher quality that lasts longer than what we actually come back and mess with. And so that would be that you're asking him to not do this particular bid, but do a bid that, you would actually kind of pull this bid back so that he could bring forward the compare contrast of a higher-quality lifespan investment in Bonner County roads versus other projects that impact the pavement and markings. You're asking him to do that and then bring forward if it's reasonable to you that the pavement markings aspect versus asphalt and road rebuilding is such that you would identify that maybe a higher quality for a longer lifespan is warranted. But it would require him to kind of do a presentation on overall road repair inclusive of, of the paint. In part, because is that what you were saying in part?
Yeah, well, the way I'm thinking about this is, you know, our budget for this cycle is already set, and going and getting a more expensive product would bounce our budget for what we have for striping this year. But as we select a contractor, having those conversations about what, what paint options might we have and bringing those to you during our budget cycle and say, look, our budget for striping's $140,000 this year. For 2026, Jason's proposing to raise it to $250,000, which will get us a paint type, a different type or a different thickness of paint that might last, you know, three or four years, based on our conversations with the striping companies that have far more knowledge than I do on different stripes available. So that, that might be the best time to address that.
To clarify, and I, I see your point about the budget. So Commissioner Williams, as I look, I understand your point, as I look at the proposed advertisement for bids, the, we're not approving the specifications that are a part of the bid. So this is just approval to advertise. And then interested parties, when they contact Road and Bridge, Road and Bridge will give them the requirements for that, for that bid, is the way I see this.
Well, I, I already have the, I have the bid packages ready to go out. So you're only seeing the advertisement in your packet. But I do have the bid packages with the specifications of the type of paint and all of the different things that they need to meet, ready to roll out.
He would have to change those.
I understand, but we're not actually approving his specifications. We're approving just the bid advertisement. So he could include a second product in the specifications without us having to make any changes to the bid advertisement.
That's simply all I was asking for, was an option on materials. They're gonna give you the bid estimate, and then I was just asking if we could get an option on a better quality paint that you deem would last four to five years, so it would kind of align with the cheap, the chip sealing process. So that we would have, as a board, a better understanding of, we spend $140,000 a year striping. Maybe we would end up spending $250,000, but we wouldn't have to do it twice or three times before we chip sealed. So I was just asking for an option.
Or reduce the linear footage that we do the first year to fit within the current budget. So there, I think there are options on how we look at if we choose to go with the higher quality product.
And I'm just saying, if we choose a higher-quality project, the bu, the budget for the striping is the 140, so you would reasonably have a reduction. But it's not just the difference in price, it's that, for the paint, is what I'm saying. It's that there is an impact to the other projects that we would potentially be, that's not what Matt has presented. He hasn't shown, if he adds, if he adds in a bid that says this is a higher-quality paint, but it would only allow for X amount of roads to be done. There's additional information he'd have to present about what those impacts would be to additional projects. And that wouldn't, that's where I'm saying, that's a discussion that's greater than what this bid is. It's not just, this is lower, like a higher quality.
I agree, but I think we could approve this bid advertisement as presented, get that second data point for the other product, and then based on what you're saying, we can look at all that data and make a decision about if we are going to choose a higher-quality product and thereby reduce the total mileage of, you know, so I think we can still play out that discussion that you're describing while making this request to have additional data point on cost for a second product and approve what we have before us today for the bid advertisement. I think that all three can align.
I agree. I just want to make sure we're also recognizing that we're asking Matt to come back with essentially a presentation on how the higher, if you go with the higher bid or higher quality, how that impacts other projects within Road and Bridge. That's right. Just want to make sure that we address that.
We're increasing the complexity of their maintenance plan.
Yes.
Acknowledged. But I, I agree with, I think, Commissioner Corn's point. Just like the reason to do a performance qualifications and cost-based selection instead of just low bid selection, if we want to figure out what ultimately is going to have the greatest performance for every dollar spent, then I think unfortunately, we have to put in the extra effort to make that evaluation and.
And it could potentially be a good time, because we're coming up on budget. And when we're looking at the next budget for striping, if the decision from the board is to pay for the higher quality and do the cost benefit of that, then we need to really address what is the budget for pavement markings, because we're coming up on needing to make that decision. And we have a lot of, a lot of road where people feel like we can't see. And if there's that cost benefit for the health and safety that we do the higher quality, even if we lose a little bit by over, that we know what we can prepare for. I just want to make sure we know. We are then going to have to send a directive to Road and Bridge of what to present when they get the bids back, because it isn't going to just be, here's the cost, it's not that much different, or we would accept a lower. There's other things that get impacted that can result in a negative impact to Road and Bridge as a whole that we, as a board, accept, because you will get community complaints about what's not done, and we need to make sure we balance those two things. That's, and I think we're all in agreement on that.
Yep, I think your points are all valid. I just, I'd like to see us move forward with having that second data point. And we may choose not to do anything with it in this current budget year, but as you're saying, just for planning next year, but at least we'd have a real number and a real understanding of impact.
I'm prepared to make a motion at this time.
Make it.
I move to approve the notice of advertisements for bid proposals for the 2025 roadway pavement markings project.
Seconded.
All right. Public comment. I like the jacket. We'll let you go first. Name county of residence.
My name's John Dupree. I'm a resident of Bonner County. And as a man who has driven roads for millions of miles all over the world, there's a little factor I'd like to be considered as you are considering this. And it would be very nice if our striping in the roads had a glare kind of a thing, so that if it's raining or snowing, that it's easy to see where that centerline in particular, and it would be nice on the sidelines, that you could see it no matter how bad the weather is. And, um, because it's a safety issue. And I would imagine it's more expensive to get that kind of paint, but I think it's worthwhile for the safety of the citizens, especially some of us who have been around the world a little bit longer than others. I know from experience, this is an important thing. Thank you. And by the way, you guys are superb.
I think on your comment on the, I had the, we, when we did Road and Bridge meeting, we talked about why we don't have the white lines.
The foggy lines?
Yeah, the, and the new LED lights are really hard to continue to see, and then you look down and there's not the follow line. And that comes back to budget. Are we going to increase the striping to add for that white line? Because that's, Bonner County does the centerline, not the white line. Where you see the white line, that's not Bonner County. And so that's a question of, do we want that white line for those reasons? Because I asked about the white line at our, at our meeting with the director. So we'll definitely add that as a conversation point for the next budget. All right.
Just as a spitball, you'd probably need to triple the budget to put fog lines everywhere, because centerlines where it's dashed, um, lines aren't using up that much paint, but the fog lines are continuous everywhere.
Triple the budget. So when we come to budget, and if that line triples, we heard it. Okay. Wayne Martin?
I apologize for not saying Wayne Martin, Bonner County on the last comment. It's me this time. I do want to thank you for bringing up a rating system for contractors, and I think the other departments in the county should consider doing that for any of the bids that they put out. I appreciate and thank Ron Corn for bringing up the paint quality and the standard. I am hoping that in all of this, you will be looking at what will occur to the paint that's put down when the trucks are out painting, or, sorry, when they're plowing, and then also when sand is put out there, because I know sand in particular is going to affect, because it's abrasive on that. And a comment that was just mentioned to me, and I'm sorry, I'm going backwards just a little bit. The corner of Edgemere and Spirit Lake Cut Off, you're going to pave all that. That is going to increase the traffic load on that, and that is a, a high probability of an increase in accidents because of the speeds in which people are traveling currently out there on the dirt roads. And that reverts back to what Teresa had said earlier about her area. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And we'll go to Ms. Heisner on comments on the current agenda item, please.
I'm going back to the white lines. I know, driving from North Priest River to Coeur d'Alene last night in the dark with the LED lights and the pouring rain and the fog, I couldn't see anything. Then you add the sand, which now has completely, you know, obliterated any white line that was remaining. Is it possible to do rumble strips? Um, I know you have them in the center divider, and just because you can't use delineators, you can't use reflective, because they'll just get wiped out by the snowplows. Is there any other ideas that would save on the budget?
We can discuss, we'll discuss, we can bring those things up at their Road and Bridge meeting to see if that's an option. And I, the reason I'm not pushing that to Mulder is he's not the director, and he's just presenting the item on the, the particular agenda item.
Gotcha. Just wanted to clarify, you can't see anything on that shoulder. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, that's Teresa Heisner, Bonner County resident. All righty. Any further public comment? Seeing none, further deliberation by the board on this agenda item?
None.
Hearing done, roll call vote?
Yes.
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 All right. Item number three. So this is a change order number three to our liquid asphalt contract. So two years ago, or I guess three years ago now, we, we did the same project with ergon asphalt supply. So we did a bid proposal package with them rather than just low bid, and set up an annual price for different oil products that we use for our chip sealing, BST work, fog seal, et cetera. And as part of that contract, we are allowed to extend it up to four years, for five years total on the contract. And the annual price change, if both the contractor and Bonner County are agreeable to extending that contract, the price changes based on ITD's asphalt index price. So when we first put this out to, for bid proposals in 2022, the cost for CMS2P, which is what we use, the oil that we use for our chip seal, was $705. And in 2024, it was down to 620. And now in 2025, they're proposing it be down to $604.66 per ton. So as the price of oil barrels has dropped in the ensuing years since we started this contract, we are getting a better price based on the asphalt index. So it is proposed today that we extend this contract yet another year with change order number three in the amount of $908,062.09, which is enough to fund 1,500 tons of CMS2P and one ton of HFE 150 and one ton of CSS1 fog seal, just to keep those placeholders in the contract. But we are not anticipating using any of those this year, so really, we're after the CMS2P.
Okay.
The original contract price was $954,000 and change, and with this change order, it would bring the total contract price to 3.7 million roughly.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Mulder?
Uh, just one. In the spirit of the previous conversation we had, are you guys satisfied? I'm assuming your recommendation comes with, you're satisfied with the performance of this current contract, so if.
Yeah, they, they have been fantastic to work with. Yeah. They, they have been fantastic to work with. The product has been performing flawlessly. We haven't been suffering any chip loss during our chip seals. We're very happy with it. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
I think with the savings, uh, we'll be able to buy better striping, striping paint.
Okay. Motion. I, I think that the Road and Bridge Department also deserves an equal compliment of doing a good job of looking out for Bonner County's interest in getting quotes and not just going with the same and increasing the expectations within the community of what they present so that it's not always a guarantee. It's, it's seen as a, we expect the quality of it. So thank you for the presentation. I think you did a good job on all of the ones that you put forward with the information available.
You're welcome. And thank you.
Agreed. Uh, based upon the information before us, I move to approve change order number three for the 2022 liquid asphalt contract, extending the contract for 2025 at the revised unit prices as shown for a total contract increase of $908,062.09.
Seconded.
All right. Any questions from the public on saving money at this? Anyone to pose? All right. Further deliberation by the board?
None.
Hearing none. Roll call vote?
Mr. Donkey?
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
All right. Director Shuck, airports.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time today. I have two items before you. They are both grant applications to the leading Idaho Initiative I T D Airport Aid Program. The first one is for Sandpoint Airport. The second one is for Priest River Airport. The Sandpoint Airport Grant Application will fund the improvements to an existing hangar owned by the county to make it suitable as a snow removal equipment storage building. The project will add a 16-foot by 52-foot space to an existing building, which will accommodate necessary work and office areas for county maintenance staff year round. The current 1960s-era snow removal equipment building and maintenance shop is scheduled for demolition and is beyond its useful life with unknown structural integrity. Removal of the current building is identified on the airport master plan to allow more ramp space and hangar storage areas. The grant request is in the amount of $195,000 and there is no county match requirement. I recommend applying for this grant.
All right. Can I ask for confirmation? Bill, did Bill take a look at it? It looks like it went through auditing.
I did ask Bill to look at it and he came back to me and said that he didn't need to until there is an offer from I T D.
Okay. Thank you.
Correct.
All right. Any questions on the board before you motion?
None.
All right. We'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move that Bonner County apply for this leading Idaho Initiative grant in the amount of $195,000 and that the chair sign administratively.
Second.
All right. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Further deliberation by the board?
Have none.
All right. Roll call vote.
Mr. Donkey?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Next item, Director.
Thank you. The second item is the same type of grant application. This grant will fund two projects at Priest River Airport, a snow removal equipment building and significant pavement maintenance for the runway, apron, and taxiways. The pavement project will consist of crack ceiling, seal coating, and remarking the runway, taxiway, aprons, and tie-down areas as described in the grant application exhibits. The funding request for this project is $263,000. The snow removal equipment building project will construct a 50-foot by 60-foot metal building housing three equipment bays behind 14-by-14-foot overhead doors. We seasonally store our John Deere loader, tractor, mower deck, and two plow trucks. We have a site prepped and ready from an earlier effort to construct this needed building. The funding request for this building project is $390,000. The combined grant request is $653,000 and there is no county match requirement.
Thank you. And the same, that nothing from Bill until you have something, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Any questions from the board on this item? All right. We'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move that Bonner County apply for this leading Idaho Initiative grant in the amount of $653,000 and that the chair sign administratively.
Motion. Is there a second?
Seconded.
All right. Any questions from the public on this item? Seeing none. Any further deliberation by the board?
None.
Seeing none. Roll call vote.
Mr. Donkey?
Yes.
Mr. Donkey?
Yes?
Chair Carter? Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. So this is Bill Wilson for the Prosecutor's Office. And the item before the board today is a renewal of our LexisNexis contract. And just by way of background, the Idaho, relevant Idaho code requires the county to provide a legal library for the public that they can use to research legal topics. And for many years or for a long, long time, that was provided with a physical library in the courthouse. But several years ago, we transitioned from that physical library to offering, uh, just one, uh, access point for a online legal search tool called LexisNexis that's available at the library on Division Street. And that's how we satisfy that statutory requirement. So we do that with this contract. Uh, it's up for renewal. The increase, um, from the previous contract is about $30 a month, which is consistent with other price increases we've seen. And so I recommend that the board approve the contract so that we can continue to comply with that statutory obligation.
I do have a question or two.
Okay. Commissioner Donkey.
Uh, Bill, how does the, how does the public access the electronic library? What's the method for that?
Commissioner Donkey, I've never actually been to the location and used it myself. So, um, I can give you the example of how I use, um, a very similar product called Westlaw that we, that we use for all of the attorneys in my office. It's just a, an online service that you log into and then you can use, um, search tools. Um, there's an AI function, um, at least on the Westlaw one. I don't know about Lexis. Um, but it allows you to search all relevant statutory and case law and other secondary sources. So it is a, a trimmed down version of the type of product that we use in, in the Prosecutor's Office. And it's LexisNexis and Westlaw are the two primary players in that field. Both of them have basically competing, almost identical products. Um, so it's, it's just us, it's basically a search engine of all the legal material that one would need in order to research a legal topic. Um, but as to how you actually go into the library and, and ask and how to access that, I don't have personal information about that.
Okay. I, I'm thinking about this, Bill, in the spirit of the, um, Sheriff app that we talked about as a previous agenda item today. Um, trying to understand, I, I couldn't see in the information that LexisNexis provided, if somebody has to actually register or log in to access this data, or if it's just, um, you know, an open terminal that you can go in and, and access the information and, and it's not collecting user information. Um, so I'm trying to better understand, uh, how, how public access works and going back to the question with the Sheriff app of, do we have end user data that we need to consider the protection of and how that comes into play is what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah. I, I don't know the answer to that question, but this does bring up, this brings up a, a dilemma that we face with almost every contract of this type that we face, that we have to struggle with. And that is, how do we balance the potential, um, you know, exposure of data with, uh, the benefit or that we receive from the contract? Like in, in this case, the statute in question requires that we provide this service. So, uh, you know, even if there are potential risks with data exposure, we, there's no realistic way that we can provide a physical legal library. Like that, that may have been a viable option 50 years ago. It's just not now. Um, so that we're faced with, you know, being forced to comply with the statute, um, versus potential concerns about data security. Um, I don't mean to diminish the concerns about those things, but, um, when I'm faced with a statutory obligation, that's, that's my primary concern. So, um, if there are potential data issues with it, um, it's, we either, you know, we have to accept those unless we can find a suitable alternative, which I'm just not aware of.
So Bill, can I answer some of the questions? I've used LexisNexis before and I'm showing Commissioner Donkey their privacy policy on it. You do have to log in very similar to Westlaw to have access to it, but they do tell you the privacy and data collection so that you can see that before you submit the information. They do have, it's really just your email address and stuff that they do, but they do have a privacy policy that they clearly tell.
Yeah. So I see on the login screen at the bottom of the page, they have a direct link to the privacy policy. Um, and in my mind, that's the most critical piece because I, I agree, Bill, there's a balance we have to figure out. And, um, some things right now that we utilize, we either don't have or do not understand, um, what the policies are. And so getting clarity around that, I think is important as, you know, as we work on the chip away at that issue. And then in this case, I would say that because the end user is choosing to utilize the service and because there's a published privacy policy that they can review before they choose to engage in the use of that service, then they're making an informed decision. So I'm, I'm comfortable with that now that I understand how it works. But thank you. I just, um, I, I understand we have statutory obligations and I appreciate that concern, but I just want to be sure we're, again, making an informed decision or at least raising the flag of alarm if we have to do so in the process of doing something while kicking and screaming because we're forced to do it. So.
And just so to clarify for those concerned about it, LexisNexis, you, before you even sign up, you can look at their privacy. You can look at how they use your data, how they store your data to determine if that's the way in which you want to research. Um, it's just for this particular one front, it's a requirement that the county make the service available to you, but you don't, you can clearly see their privacy policy on their website. Any further, uh, questions from the board for Bill before we make a motion and go to public comment?
No, other than the fact, I think, um, page seven of your memorandum, Bill, is for the end user. I don't know if you have that in front of you.
Uh, no, I don't. I'm just, um, can you read it off?
Yeah. So it's just a quick checklist, organization name, full legal name, billing frequency, monthly or annually, whether or not you're tax exempt or not.
That's for the county.
That's for the county?
Yeah. That's, so that's what we would fill out.
So that's not the end user?
Mm-mm. That's for the end user of the agreement. So the county signs this up, but in terms of the community using it, you go to their site and you can see their policy and if they tell you what their, their position is, and then you sign up and then you're agreeing to it. But this is the county, the county.
So is there a charge for that?
No. With that, well, that's what we are, that's what we are paying.
Right. We're supplying the library.
But the library makes it available. Did you want to see the same thing, Commissioner Donkey?
No, that's fine. Thank you, Bill.
All right. Are we ready for a motion?
Uh, yes.
All right. We'll entertain a motion at this time.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the contract renewal with LexisNexis as presented and authorize the chair to sign administratively.
Second.
All right. Public comment. Clerk Rosedale?
Thank you. Mike Rosedale, Bonner County Clerk. Um, I want to support Bill on this. The actual, the volumes that would be required are, are, would be impossibly large. They're impossibly huge. Uh, if you have the volumes, you would have the supplemental pocket parts that would, people don't know how to use. Volumes could be stolen and taken. Plus, what Lexis West, uh, LexisNexis and Westlaw are the two titans. They are the A tier of this and they would be by far the safest. There's just simply no alternative. And we have to provide something. And so this is, there is no alternative. This is it.
Thank you.
Other than having books somewheres. Uh, we can't provide enough books for everything that might be required, state statute, federal statute, uh, state cases, federal cases that would apply to us. That would be a huge, uh, library.
You shouldn't have. You shouldn't have.
All right. Any further public comment on this topic? All right. Any further deliberation by the board?
None.
All right. Roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Donkey? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And, yeah, Bill, you can sign off on this time if you want. Thank you.
Thank you.
And remember, we were making sure we let everybody know that staff doesn't have to stay during the meeting. They can leave when they're ready. So with that, we'll turn over to District One Commissioner.
So as we've been talking about, one of the things that's been brought before me by citizens is looking at our policies in general across the county when it comes to, um, the use of apps and software and websites and all things electronic and how it impacts people's privacy, data collection. Um, and so as I said, I've asked, uh, Technology Director Storms to start investigating this first with the county's website based on feedback that we received. And then we'll continue to explore and understand, um, other software that the county utilizes so we can get a, a handle on this and figure out what the best policy is moving forward. Um, in the interim, as we've been doing today, my intent is to continue to ask the questions so we can make informed decisions, one issue at a time. And we'll keep chipping away incrementally, improving what we're doing as we ask these questions and get the information. Um, as you might imagine, a lot of calls and questions coming in, uh, with regard to our roads and, uh, stormwater runoff that's happening across the county with, uh, this sudden change in weather. Um, please understand that, um, we are about to, um, see weight limits be, uh, employed by Road and Bridge, uh, through a majority of the county roads, especially those, um, that are happening south of the river. Um, but they're putting out the green ribbons today with the posted limits and they're likely to go red and come into effect in the next day or two. Um, for those who don't know, this is a balance. We need to protect the county's infrastructure resources with the roads, but we also need to allow industry that uses a heavy hauling on our roads, such as a timber industry, to function as much as possible. And so we have to find a balance there. So, um, we do have crews that are, um, using good data to assess the current conditions and then make an informed decision. And you'll, as you'll see, as the restrictions go up, um, there will be some areas of the county, especially those of us that are, um, in the southern half of the county, that are going to see the restrictions go on sooner. We have deeper frost and more stable conditions as you move up, say Highway 57 closer to Priest Lake. And so those areas are going to have the restrictions come on later, um, because we have to look at individual areas. And so Road and Bridge, they are assessing and looking at the, uh, actual onsite conditions at the roadways across the county. So please be understanding, impatient as, uh, this process works itself out. When it comes to flooding, uh, areas, please understand, again, this is a temporary condition. Um, the short version is because the ground still has, um, is frozen below the top few inches in most areas, we just don't have percolation. Water cannot infiltrate easily into the ground yet. And so it's pretty much all surface water runoff. So we're going to have, um, temporary seasonal flooding that will alleviate itself here, um, over time as the rains reduce and as it has a little bit of time to run off. But, um, if folks see where there's actual damage that's occurred because of the flooding, please call Road and Bridge and let them know. But just please understand that if we have some inundated areas with water, that's a temporary condition that we can't necessarily mitigate. We just have to wait for time and weather to address it. But if you see damage occurring in unsafe condition, please make us aware so that we can look into that. Um, and then top areas of my priority tasks right now are responding to individual community member concerns that have come to my attention over the last few weeks, um, and digging into things that have more, take more than a few minutes to review and offer feedback on or sometimes require, uh, input from other experts in the county. And then my primary, um, focus right now in moving forward for some time likely will be to help, um, function sort of in a project management role to, um, for the board with our ambulance district as we're developing a list of tasks that we need to work through, um, in order to help develop what that future stable plan looks like for how we're going to reorganize and deal with, um, the day-to-day needs of that district and how we're going to service that district, whether it's with internal county services or whether it's with external services. That's something that was discussed at last week's ambulance service district meeting. And so we moved from bi-weekly meetings to weekly meetings so that we could chip away at this issue more quickly and efficiently. And, uh, this, uh, tomorrow, when we meet, we will be, um, starting to develop our task list of what are the items we need to resolve and then what does that schedule and prioritization look like to begin working on those issues. So, uh, invite the public to come and participate in those meetings if you'd like to help, um, comment on and shape what that looks like as we move through that process. It'll be a great opportunity to be engaged with what the future of the ambulance district looks like. That's all I have.
Two more questions.
Thank you. And if anyone has any questions about the And if anyone has any questions about the topics I just spoke about, I'm happy to answer them.
No questions. All right, we'll go on to District Two report. Ongoing issues and concerns, airport has been a high input that we've received a lot of questions regarding hangars, how we do the leases, how you get a hangar, what the direction of the airport is. A lot of concerns regarding are we changing it into a commercial airport for jets or are we going to focus on kind of one of those tenants at the airport of encouraging local pilots to be able to house their planes there. We are going to be having an executive session to address a concern that was brought forward by a group of members of the community here, I believe it's this week or next week. And we are discussing with our airport director about having a discussion with the community on the airport at Sandpoint Priest River so that people can understand the direction and kind of process and procedure. And so hopefully we'll be looking for that in the near future. But I've received a lot of concerns from public, from pilots who are wanting to have a hangar at the airport but aren't really sure how you actually achieve that. And some of it is understanding the direction is a lot of what people are asking. So look for that, that is a definite concern. And kind of to dovetail a little bit on Commissioner Donkey's report, we got very good feedback from the community on our last Bonner County EMS meeting and it resulted in some, some changes from this board of being more active and directive towards Bonner County EMS and how we move forward with that. And you'll see that in tomorrow's meeting. And so the board as a whole, I think, has done a really good job of operating as a unit. And that's one of the things that we are focused on as a unit is utilizing the strengths of each individual commissioner to push the direction. My focus with Bonner County EMS is risk and insurance and kind of that, that direction. Ongoing litigation, we have our litigation update, I believe, this week. And so you'll get a more detailed review of what are our open cases, have we settled anything right now? The answer on settlement is no. Some people have emailed on specific cases to see if they've gone away. Most things have not gone away. Currently, I'm working on an issue, that's an executive session issue, so sometimes you don't get to hear all the mitigation things that are happening. But we are fighting for our dollars to remain within our county, I'll say it that way. Workshops pending, I want to pause before I say anything and offer to Chief Armstrong, did you want to mention the event that's coming up that you guys are partnering with? Or do you want me to mention it? You shot, you shot, you shot me an email. And partly I want to make sure that we highlight what our fire service is doing because sometimes we can get fixed on EMS and law enforcement. And I think part of what we've learned through our, our current struggle here is that it's a triad, we have to make sure that we include fire. And so Chief Armstrong sent us an email regarding North Idaho Fire Leadership Symposium is coming here April 30th to May 1st. And it's an opportunity for us to be educated as a whole. And so that workshop is coming up. They're also partnering with LPOSD for ASHER training. And so he also advertised that they're working with EMS as a partner in the planning as well. And so we want to show our appreciation for that open dialogue and communication because each one of these groups serves the Bonner County as a whole. And the more we open up and break down our communication barriers, we can do a better service for our county. So thank you for sending that over. We are, we did do a workshop on Bonner County's treatment of employee appreciation and kind of shifting that from a monthly to an annual that's tied to performance. We've heard a lot of input from community and from people within the organization that want to move in that direction so that it means something and so that we address how we're individually doing it because some of that has been siloed. So that was a really good workshop that came up with really tying it to performance. And so you'll see those changes. We are diligently working with our HR on updating policies and procedures and even looking at job descriptions that we have to make sure they're correct for the tasks that we are expecting to measure. It's not an easy, quick fix because you're talking years of doing things a certain way. And so as a board, we're working together to address those policies so that we update them, not incremental updates, but full updates of those policies. So our next one is a workshop on our travel. The board commission positions, we have the APA applications that have been received for people applying. We will interview all four people. This board is going to take a look at how we interview it, whether or not there should be an element that is open to the public. And then we go into executive session for specific things that you shouldn't disclose out, outside of type of a hiring position. We have not done that decision yet, so it'll be the traditional way of doing an executive session, asking questions. I would encourage people to take a look at what's happening in our, the APA is rapidly changing even as we're supposed to by legislature make those decisions. There's a little bit of pullback from our Association of Counties as it relates to some of what the APA wants to do. So right now, the Idaho Association of Counties is kind of taking a step back and taking a position of taking a look at it. I was blessed with attending the town hall in Cootney County. It was very exciting. But one of the things that was exciting was I'm following very specifically on homeowner's exemption. And so we're moving forward with that. And it looks like the bill, the bill has passed the first phase and the exemption request is that it moved from the 125 to $250,000. And so that was good to hear. We didn't get to hear a lot about some things, but that, that's an update. One of the other updates from Rep. Redman was the idea of as our elder population being able to not pay their tax, but kind of put it as a lien until the person passes. That warrants people taking a look at. I wasn't, when I heard it, I was like, eh, that means we have to sell that because if it affects inheritance essentially. But that's worth taking a look at, some of the things that are moving forward. There was a discussion on grocery tax and people want that to go away and why that's probably likely never going to happen in Idaho, even though we keep saying remove the grocery tax. So don't expect that to go away, but that did increase, the dollar amount did increase. One of the things that, as we, we have part-time legislature and there are things sitting before them that warrant our calls to push our narrative forward. And so one of the things, so I just wanted to highlight some that are, have support, some that don't have support, that are important to our county. Ag protection is up there in HB 233. Association of Counties has taken a position of we're just going to watch it. We still have to make this board, but they're, they're just going to watch it. Board of Commissioners, I, regarding how we publish, it has the support of Idaho Association of Counties and it looks like we might prevail in the idea that we don't have to use the newspaper, but that we can use a, our own method, such as posting it on our own websites. That would take the county to go through, if you're going to remove using the B, for example, how do we make sure that the communication gets to our community because that's what's most important? So that's something worth watching. Domestic water in S1083, there are some changes coming with water and requirements are being put before the legislature regarding not just availability of water, but quality of water now. And so that is definitely worth us taking a look at. And public health boards of House Bill 241 and state lands lupa, which is an exciting one, to say that it was introduced and it would require any commercial development on state lands to be subject to local development code. And so as we go through, it's worth you guys reading those and taking a look at it and encouraging your legislatures the way you want things to go. And so with that, I will ask for any questions on what I reported out. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Commissioner Corn.
Last week, I met with veterans in the area at the Priest River VFW with our VA Director, listened to their concerns about VA benefits and medical service issues. If any vets need any help with paperwork or benefits or filing with the VA, please reach out to our county VA Director, Tom Lindley, for assistance. He can be very helpful in helping people fill out those forms and all. Last Thursday, I attended a couple of meetings at the Panhandle Health District, District One down in Court Lane. The first one being with the North Idaho Volunteer Coordinator Retention Strategies Workshop. We discussed different ways of retaining and finding volunteers and issues such as communications. Volunteers, Red Cross, a lot of fire departments and stuff. I would like to see more volunteer programs utilized within our county to help offset some of the labor issues. So that is something that if anybody want to reach out to me, I can discuss that with them. I also attended later that afternoon their District One Board Meeting where I spoke in support of their informed consent agenda item. I believe in our medical freedoms and I believe that the parents should have as much information, such as the vaccine ingredients, side effects, as well as benefits, so that they can make a well-informed decision on whether they're immunized, their children or not. I also volunteered to sit on their steering committee to see where this is going to go and how they're going to go about it. Let's see here, upcoming events, the Bonner County Sportsman's Gun and Horn Show starts this Friday, 12 to 6, Saturday, 9 to 6, and Sunday, 9 to 2. There's a retirement mixer at the Hive tomorrow night, or tomorrow afternoon, 3 to 5 on volunteers, if you're retired or even if you're not retired, interested in volunteering, there's going to be information there and opportunities to meet different volunteer organizations throughout the county. And last but not least, we have our monthly training coming up for the Bonner County Civil Defense and Resilience Team. They will be presenting information on cybersecurity this Friday night here down at the EOC Room from 5:30 to 7. It will be presented by our county technology director and topics to include understanding cyber threats and best practices, password security, securing personal devices, analyzing suspicious emails and social engineering awareness. So if you're interested in any of that, please come down, it's free of charge. The big main room downstairs off to the right, when you first come in, the door's there. Friday night, 5:30 to 7.
Okay, is that all?
That's all I have.
I wanted to give a public comment so that it wasn't tied to mine, to recognize our Priest River Retirement Center. They actually, they do a lot of donations within the community, even though they're a community that has needs. And so they were recognized for combating crisis because they gave a donation to Hartbridge Life Center that serves Newport and Priest River. It, it was amazing to see that a community that has its own needs recognizes a need to help other people. And so thank you to Priest River. And if you guys, if you've never participated with Priest River, Happy Aged Years, they do a lot in the community. And you can, on Mondays, they do serve lunch. They welcome everybody to participate. They have a lot of events, it's very community-centered. But when you look at how much they actually put back into that community, it's amazing to see. And then, so they did get recognized in the newspaper for it. I went down, Ted Moss is, they got a picture donating their, their funds that they get, which really shows you what community can do. The only comment that they want to make sure we hear is they get a lot of service from Bonner County EMS, they're very thankful for what Bonner County EMS does. They come, Bonner County EMS actually was there on Monday, we did, that, we had the lunch there and they did the blood pressure checks and helping the community in that way. But thank you to Priest River Community Center for helping community needs. And it's not, it's not a little feat, it is actually a large feat, feat for them. You can always participate and as Ron said, you can always volunteer. There's a lot of people that want volunteers in that, in that area. So I wanted to make sure to recognize them outside of just a, a regular report. So with that, we'll go to public comment. Ms. Williams, name and residency.
I'm a Bonner County resident.
Thank you.
I still am confused on the conditions of approval. Do we have a conditions and approval enforcement team?
Did you read the full report that showed the conditions, conditions of approval?
Yeah, so that's what was confusing to me. It says here that the sanitary restrictions have not been met for subdivisions that have been plotted recently in the minor land divisions and the shore plat that was approved today. I took it upon myself to make a quick phone call down to South Side Water District just to ask if they had any communication about it. They seem to be a little bit confused and also informed me that they're already overburdened. So.
So outside of that comment, when I asked you, did you read that? So that's the condition of approval comment, not that piece. I'm asking you the additional piece that's in the actual report, the staff report.
Maybe it's not on the, the report that's out here. If you guys do happen to have a copy of it, if I could get a copy.
So you can go online on the planning website?
I'm looking on it right now.
So I can't see at that distance, but you can go on the planning website in the full.
You can maybe scroll through it with me after it, but I don't see any of the letters. If you guys could start producing the letters when you communicate with the local agencies. I see one, maybe two, and I see a lot of opposing concerns. I come to these meetings and I see like the fire district and ambulance and all those people saying how we don't have firefighters, we don't have ambulance, we don't have the support for subdivisions, but we're continuously approving of them. Like, I don't object to people like doing construction, making money, doing what they have to do, but I mean, if we have some pretty basic rules, we need to follow them, I'd say.
Okay, thank you. Chief Armstrong.
Jeff Armstrong, Bonner County resident, also the fire chief. Wanted to go back to your point real quick and just clarify, you said ASHER training and I'm not sure if everybody gets that. It's not a term we like to say publicly, but I'm going to say it, it's active shooter, hostile event. So we'll be hosting that at a local school. Fire law and EMS to come together to say, what if something happens, right? And it's not necessarily just an active shooter. So we kind of put that into ASHER terms just to keep that term from getting out there because it's, it's not a great term to say. So I have some notes on my phone, I'm not live on TikTok. And I like to wander because I'm passionate about the fire service, so I'm going to try to stay on point. Even though we aren't, as a fire district's a political subdivision, the county public safety discussion should be at the front four of our, forefront of our discussions. Want to bring your attention to a House bill that's making its way through the legislative process right now, House Bill 208. This mitigates some prior impact to the fire districts and lays a foundation for discussions on these districts to potentially save money, work together and leverage resources in new ways. I know some of our local reps voted against it in the House and there's probably some confusion over what it actually does to the fire service. I know regionalization consolidation's not a popular topic here, but we're talking real opportunities that exist for us to collaborate and work together. And I think saving money, saving the taxpayer money and leveraging resources and is probably something that resonates with people here. So I'm just asking people to keep an open mind and if you've got questions, please come talk to me on how that would impact us. If our levies are not approved, the voters, by the voters, this is a pathway forward for us to ensure we can either provide the current level of service or not have to reduce in the future. Make no mistake, we cannot continue at the current rate. If you want to learn more about either option or decision points that we face in the future, please reach out for a one-on-one meeting. I'm happy to discuss it more here. I'm happy to come to one of your chats if I'm invited. We're happy to share our budgets, how our funds are allocated and some of the challenges we're facing and we welcome public input. I was walking down the hall and I saw there's a Do's sign. So if Elon's, Elon's in town, he could swing through, we're happy, we're an open book. We're happy to show you what we got going on. Men and women of the fire districts paid and volunteer are your friends, neighbors. Many of our career staff live here, some can't afford to live here. But we're just trying to ensure we have the resources to protect this community as it grows. And he just mentioned it's, it's not growing, it's booming. More importantly, I want to work hard to be honest with the public about what's going on. I don't want to create threats and I don't want to create scare tactics, but I need to be honest. And we can sit down, look at a spreadsheet and look at the dollars and you guys will be able to see what we're facing. Switching gears to a happier topic, firewise. Sent you an email about firewise, I'm still looking for a champion in the community. I think that really is a great stopgap between bonfire, between some of the other efforts that are going on. And it's a community-driven effort. I need a community chair, I need someone, nominations are open.
And Chief, I will just mention, I do not have confirmation of a willing party yet, but I will get in touch with you. I have a community member who's been speaking with me about this since I took office. And so I will pursue that conversation with that community member to see if they have an interest.
So the best nominations happen when people aren't in the room. So they're not online, they're not in the room, let's nominate.
If they're not willing, it just doesn't go far.
I'm still working on insurance for you too.
It's a great grassroots movement and I, and I see it out there and I see it growing. People are starting to come and talk about it. So I think firewise is, we should at least explore. As fire chief, I can't take the lead because it's a community-driven project, I'm sorry, a community-driven organization. What's nice is it can take on small projects. If people have the financial inability or physical inability to go out and mitigate their own vegetation, it's something that we can, as a board, decide to go forward. And I'm probably out of time, but volunteers, I'd love to sit and talk with you about volunteers. We just went through a volunteer firefighter recruitment and I know volunteering for Red Cross where you can go in on Tuesday at 4 o'clock to 6 Cross where you can go in on Tuesday at 4:00 to 6:00. We don't schedule our fires that way. So being able to volunteer on Tuesday afternoon is a lot different than being able to be a volunteer firefighter, even a volunteer EMS person, but I'm happy to talk to you on some of the feedback. We ended up getting several volunteers that are going through the process right now. We have five in Northside and we have three in Selkirk. So happy to talk with you someday about it.
Chief Armstrong, I think that the idea of doing a chat that allows you to go over the, like, House Bill 208, I think that's a really good idea. So maybe we can schedule that so that we can get a video that kind of explains all of that to the public, because as we come up on voting, that's going to be an important clarification as well. And I think it can help kind of support the community effort of being involved in understanding. So I like that idea.
Please reach out, I'll make my schedule work.
You tell me when, because I don't have one scheduled. So you just pick a date on Tuesday, and then we will adjust executive session, because executive session is always at the eight, but we'll change it so that we can get that conversation. And then maybe that's also an opportunity for the discussion on volunteers and what that means. Because I think part of what you're looking for is you guys need some paid firefighters as well, not just volunteers, and maybe that's a good opportunity to have that discussion.
I could talk on that for hours, but I will keep, I will keep it short.
All right.
I'll reach out to you at the date.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Name and residence.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bill Rusk. I am a tenant at the Sandpoint Airport, and I am here representing myself and Silver Leathers regarding the fire hydrant and reimbursement. You should have all received an email and also a hard copy on this. So I'd like to address just a couple of issues on that. Several years ago, about four and a half years ago, several of us approached the airport about putting water and sewer in so that we could have a bathroom in our hangar. At that time, the manager of the airport indicated that there was supposed to be a fire hydrant at the end of our row for the hangers, and it was not there. That's where we would normally connect to the water. He indicated that the airport did not have the funds budgeted to put that fire hydrant in, and if we would do so, his proposal to us, not the other way around, if we, if we would put that fire hydrant in, he would reimburse us for that cost. We did the job, put the fire hydrant in, had our contractor break out the cost, presented that to him, and two and a half years later, we still have not received any form of, of The, a recent proposal from airport management was that they would pay for just the fire hydrant. And I'd like to address that and say that had we not wanted water and sewer, the airport would have had to put in the fire hydrant and the water line to the fire hydrant, just like we did. They would have had to get engineered drawings, they would have had to get the approval from the state, the county and the city. They would have had to meet all the codes, they would have had the same length trench that we did, because that was the only place you could connect. The airport management forced us to backfill that trench with rock, which turned out to be a huge unexpected expense. And assuming that he would do the same thing he required us to do, he would have had, again, the same expense on that. Finally, he had the opportunity to look at us and say, the airport will put the fire hydrant in, and then you guys can connect to it just like it's normally done. He didn't do that. He put the onus on us. We effectively gave the airport a $60,000-plus interest-free loan, and we're kind of stuck right now because he's not remunerating us or allowing us. The remuneration was going to be the reduction in our annual rent fee over a period of time. So we are asking the county commissioners to enforce and keep the verbal agreement that was made by your representative, the airport manager, and reimburse us for our water and sewer. Thank you very much.
So I'm only going to give a pause because we have limited. We all received that email, and on receipt, it was immediately responded back to that an executive session needed to be happened so that the board could address what was put in that correspondence to us. So there's, because we have to make a vote on what happens, we're not going to give a comment on the content, but your issue was received with the level of urgency that said we need to address this. And so we did send that request out, but we can't comment on what you're saying right now, because it is something that we'll have to vote on an agenda item on. Okay?
Thank you.
But I will say thank you because I understood that there was a different option, instead of asking the board to take a look at it, there was an option to file suit. So I appreciate that you guys are allowing us to take a look at that.
Yeah, we don't want to go there if we can possibly avoid it.
And so the board is taking what was sent to us with the level of urgency that you brought it, brought it to this board.
Thank you very much.
This is our, this is our first blush as a whole board. I didn't even see this in the last two years, so we're taking it, what was presented seriously.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
And we will, I did ask, Bill, we will, we are able to tell you the statement, and he's going to send a comment to that saying, the board has received it and we are reviewing the issue in writing.
Right.
Thank you, sir. Public comment from the risk manager.
Yeah, this is Christian Johnson, Bonner Congress Management. I have an update for the consent agenda. I've been emailing the repair shop for that frame repair. So a couple of comments. One is, one question was on the miscellaneous. That comes from line 12, which is a dealer charged to mount the engine and the transmission and top off all the fluids. So it's reflected in line 12, basically. It's an outside charge from the dealer. And then, I don't know if we can, we can't go back for today, but there's not, that there's a rush, but they did find a used frame, which this is, I'll bring it to the next meeting, I guess, for approval. But the normal frames are three or four grand more, they happened to find a used one. And the final thing I'm thinking about doing is, it's a, the part that got dented is, it's been a common problem with the design of the Tahoe's, where it's not armored, it's in the back, so it gets hit by something, you have to change out the whole frame. But they are willing to try to swap it out. It's not a exchangeable item they can do, it's all one component, but they're willing, it's okay with the mechanic for sure, office for safety, of course, to maybe try to swap it out if they can. But it'd be kind of a not standard type of fix. So just letting you know on the update.
Thank you for that. I think that they know specifically what that item was, they should just put what that item is instead of calling it miscellaneous. I think that that would be beneficial.
You apologize for that.
Commissioner Donkey.
Christian, not, sorry.
Sorry, I, he was, we started speaking at the same time.
Look right first.
No, I started speaking and he started speaking, so I was trying to defer to him because we started at the same time. But let's go left first, because, go ahead.
What? Oh, man.
Look, see, now I gotta go back to the right.
So in my opinion, transferring engine and transmission should be under labor. That's a labor charge, a labor cost.
They may have their labor because it's an outsourced item, I'm assuming, I don't know, I don't do their billing. Because they're not doing it, it has to go to the dealer to do the mechanical work, I think, to switch it. It's a body shop.
So did you get an itemized list, as Commissioner Donkey was asking for, on what the miscellaneous charges were? Because they're not the same. So there must be more miscellaneous charges other than the labor of switching the motor and the transmission into the new frame.
What he said was, this is for dealer fees, to have them top off fluids and then transfer transmission and engine. So it's probably not an in-house fee, it's the fee from the dealer.
It sounds like what they did was they, they didn't require an itemized bill from the third party that they sent the vehicle in to be repaired. That's what it sounds like.
Yeah, I get that too, of course.
And I think that answers the question of, for them, they feel it's a third party, so it's miscellaneous. But what the board is saying is, that should be accounted for, and so the bill from the dealer should have gone directly to this person and should be included in what the cost is, so that you can see their labor of their parts and then their stuff.
That makes sense too, okay. So I can bring it back later, I guess, if they still have that.
Yeah, so I'm better understanding that this is a body shop, and they probably don't do engine and transmission swaps.
Yeah, dealers.
So it's going out to a third-party mechanical repair shop. But it'd be nice if numbers lined up.
And this, you know, this is not the repair bill, this is the operations start. In the past, I can't speak for this one, but the past, the shop's been good with this outside vendors, either for parts, or for decals. They would include all those invoices with the final bills, they include everything. In this case, it's more an estimate still, just getting permission before we start, because it's over the five grand.
So just, can you just bring it back to the board?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Arn.
Good morning, Jennifer Arn, Bonner County resident. And I'm here to report that Idaho House Bill 101, which you didn't mention, preserving public access, is finally being heard tomorrow in the House Transportation and Defense Committee, and it's led by our District One Representative, Cornell Razor. This bill should prevent future loss and/or privatization of public road right-of-way access to our state and federally owned waters and lands, like what happened with Camp Bay Road. If access to our publicly-owned waters and lands is important to you, please, please, please email the 14 members of the House Transportation, Defense and Defense Committee today, urging them to vote for House 101. And you can find their addresses on our legislature.idaho.gov, House Standing Committees. And this is really important, because this is where the bill, last year's bill, was stuck in this committee. And I think this is the major hurdle, that if it gets through this committee, I think it'll go through. The Senate had no problem with it last year at all, it was almost unanimous. And if you have any questions about it, it just puts some extra protections in there. Some things that were not part of the law that would have prevented what happened with Camp Bay, it would have prevented all of that expense. People would have been able to present evidence to validate their claims, which was never heard at all. And it would just show that public access is public interest for the state of Idaho. And as we all know, that we're heading for an even bigger boom in population, that it is important to, to tie down these little loose ends, our remaining accesses, that we've just, by bit by bit by bit, we've lost so much already, that if we can prevent that from happening or put those extra protections in right now, it is absolutely critical that we do this right now. So email today, because they are meeting tomorrow at 12:30.
Mrs. Arn?
Yes.
Is this the same bill that you spoke on that was introduced last session, but didn't make it?
More or less, more or less, different sponsor. That one started in the Senate, and there's been some extra communications. I know there's some vocal people the other way, but there's, this bill will not hurt their interests at all. So.
Can I ask, did you do a canned letter that has all of the legislatures so that you, we could distribute that to the community?
I didn't this time. But if you go to legislature.idaho.gov-
I know where it is. I was looking for the, well, you want, you don't just want us to do it, you want the community to do it.
I know, I know.
Sometimes the push is, you give it all in one can so that people can send it out and say, we can easily flood that comment into the legislature. And so I would encourage you, you gotta give all that information, and then when you hand it over, we can easily send it out to the community. We may say it's easy to go on that website and look, but how many people are going to look up all of those people to send a note to?
Okay, well, I'm not on Facebook anymore, so I-
Right, so my, my suggestion is, write it, email it to me, and then I'll put it on Facebook for you.
Okay.
But if you don't have it all there, you're asking the community to do so many steps.
Right.
And it decreases participation.
You know, there's been so many ups and downs and ups and downs. We've been doing this over four years.
And I'm trying to get an up, and I'm just saying, the up means you have to, you've got to give that canned letter, so.
I'm out of my game, sorry.
It's, he's been sick, I'm sure it was a lot to deal with, we understand. Send it to me and I'll help distribute it.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Is our clerk getting, okay. Doug Patterson hasn't spoken.
A couple things. One, what was the number of that bill that she was talking about?
House Bill 101.
101. Okay. So that was, my wife got real interested in that. But the reason why I wanted to, things I want to talk about were, your, your commissioners at this point have changed significantly from what they were certainly two years and more ago. And I would point out that the commission, a couple of the commissioners at least, were extremely involved in the subarea plans that were done, with lots and lots of public input, trying to, with the public expressing what they would like to see in terms of a comprehensive plan. And at the time, I was doing some serious following of all this, and the, the county was essentially restructured so that essentially those subarea plans were sidestepped and ignored. And it seems to me that there is an opportunity in terms of the, the planning and the zoning folks to integrate more of those subarea plans into the upcoming plans for approval. And I just wanted to put that out there and hope that you folks would use your appropriate hammers and nails.
Thank you, sir.
I, I would like to. Mr. Patterson, I appreciate the comment. It's duly noted. I want to clarify that, so I've made publicly similar comments prior to my being seated, and I have observed personally that items that I believed were missing or not directly addressed in the, what I'll call the prior or maybe initial recommendations that came forward for the land use designation map and the descriptions, there were a lot of folks who commented on that, and there have been revisions made to what's been proposed at this time that then has gone through the public workshop process that just concluded. And so if folks have not yet looked at the subarea plan recommendations compared to the current proposal from the Planning Commission, I would recommend folks do a comparison now with, with what's there. And then as the Planning Commission, because their next step is to, they're currently going through the comments that were received through those workshops. And so this is the, you know, the testing of the waters to see what comes from the Planning Commission now, based on the additional feedback. And so I'd recommend the community look again at what was recommended by the subarea plans against what the Planning Commission presents next. And then if you see discrepancies or differences, to raise questions about that, to understand if they have a legitimate rationale, or if you believe there's something that still hasn't been adequately addressed, so that we have that comment on the record and we can take that into consideration. But I just want folks to understand that I had previously expressed some similar concerns, but I have seen movement in a positive direction on, on some of those issues that were addressed and some of the subarea plans and/or, or some discrepancies in some of the subarea plans were identified and talked through at the workshops. And so I just, I want to encourage folks to remain involved and continue to look and assess and offer feedback. But I also want to be fair in representing the fact that the Planning Commission has made changes and to what they're proposing based on some of that feedback. So everything's a little bit of a give-and-take, back-and-forth process right now. And so please continue to be involved and continue to review and offer comments with each step of this process.
I think that's a really good point to point out, especially, I know, I focus on Spirit Valley because that's my area, and the Planning Commissioners did a fantastic job of letting you know how much of your subarea plan that they used and where they moved away from. And I think our subarea plan, I think Alan said, 90% of that plan was what they used in our area. And the way in which they deviated was actually in, more in line with what the community wanted versus away from what the community wanted. What they completely did recognize that people want to compare the comp plan to their subarea plans. And I think that Commissioner Donkey is right to give that input now, but they, their, they came up with their, I'm almost positive Alan said it was 90%. They know that that's what we want to see as a community, and I would encourage everybody to ask, how far did we deviate from the subarea plans, especially since those plans are a little bit old now? But they're making the adjustments, because the goal is to move forward with a comp plan of the community, because it's your comp plan. And so, but if you don't give that comment, then we don't get those changes. So I would encourage everybody to do. We have our next planning meeting. When's that one? Does anybody remember the next planning meeting?
It is next week. It is March 4th, one week from today, next Tuesday. I believe it'll be in this room, starting at 4:30.
Yes. And one of the things that is being discussed is, should we do more of the workshops? Because the board left it open as, that's not necessarily all of the workshops. And so the goal isn't, it's not for the board to leapfrog over the Planning Commission, it is for to make sure we're putting the information out to the public. So, I encourage you guys to participate with the planning workshop, to give your input, because oftentimes, the public isn't present for that meeting.
Yeah, and just to, I realize this may be redundant to comments I made last week, but I think it's important to make sure that, in case we have people listening today who didn't listen last week, when it comes to the process, please understand that the Planning Commission as a body is right now, they're the ones actively working, they will review comments that have been received. I understand, I believe, over 600 comments, the Planning Director told me yesterday, have been received in total through the time that's taken place with the workshops. The plant, my understanding is Planning Commission's reviewing those now, looking to make adjustments to the recommendations. After they've done that, they should come forward with another public workshop to show their revised recommendations, so then there'll be an opportunity for the public to comment on those revisions, and then whether or not they think that they have addressed all the concerns they want to address, and they're ready to bring it to the board, they'll determine when they believe they have a product that's ready for the board to review. Then we'll do workshops where the board gets to have the recommendations of the Planning Commission presented to us, we get to ask questions, to clarify, to understand their intent, to what they're proposing. We can, again, get public feedback on that information, and then the board will have a public hearing to make a final decision, and the board will choose how many hearings the board will have to go through that process and make that decision. So, there are a number of steps remaining, and I just want the community to, please do not, you know, become complacent, or disheartened, or just become disengaged. If you care about this, this is a multi-step process, there are months ahead of us in this process before we reach a final decision, so please continue to ask questions, understand the process, and stay involved if this is important to you, because we do have numerous steps left before the Board of County Commissioners makes a final decision on whether or not to adopt changes to this portion of the comprehensive plan. Sorry.
Thank you.
I can't say that any more briefly.
All right, Mr. Martin.
I'd love to say it's Susan, but it's not. Wayne Martin, for the record, Bonner County resident. A few things, with the Planning Department, I would like to see them requesting or seeking a response from EMS, fire school, schools, and law enforcement when they put their information out, and that mainly pertains to ingress, egresses, to developments, and it should be a great concern to the county for the safety of its citizens and those that are visiting the area, especially considering the fires that California has had in the recent years, you know, three to five years, and there have been other states that have major fires. Chief Anderson can tell you about many of them, I'm sure. Dave Bowman posted an article from Fire Rescue One about the fire service, and anybody that hasn't seen that or read it should do that, and it should be something, in my opinion, be reviewed by the County Commissioners. The 7th of February, I gave three packets of information on EMS Hearing Examiner Fair Board, there were questions on that, at some point in time, I hope that I will get an answer on some of those questions. Unfortunately, because of construction at my house, I was not able to be there to give you a packet. Hopefully, you received the email I sent yesterday on Employee of the Month/Year. I hope to get that to you very soon, and I do hope that you got the email. I want a second and third Doug's comments on the comp plan. Papers like the Bee and all are great, if you receive them. I do not, we do not go into town that often, frequently, it's the other direction because of doctor's appointments, so getting them up on the website or something would be fantastic. For Commissioner Corn, although I was supposed to go through the chairman of the Hive, the location and time, again, I did not get that. I want to put a shameless plug in, requesting an AED or assistance in getting an AED at the Edgemere Grange. The APA would like to have the Commissioners still consider having an APA committee of up to five people, if we can get the people to volunteer for that, and I'm waiting to see that, that be taken care of, and I believe for my notes, that's all that I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin, I would like to respond on two of the items. Confirmation of receipt of the email from yesterday, and with regard to the APA, we did do multiple notices and attempts for applications and received only four in total, so the current ordinance as adopted has a three-member commission, and I think that's appropriate to start the APA commission, and then the board could always reconsider in the future, if we see additional interest coming in, in a need, that we could, we could always amend that ordinance to extend the committee to a five-member committee, but I don't think we could have gotten it off the ground if we continue to pursue a five-member at this time.
And I understand that, and I agree with you, it's just that, you know, if we can get people to be willing to volunteer to be on that, I would really like to see, you know, that go up to a five, it makes it much easier, in my opinion, especially from the standpoint of a quorum.
I think that's what Commissioner Corn's kind of has a mission, that we increase volunteers and get, and I think that's, that's part of what his goal is, to see how we can get more people in Bonner County to participate, but for us, that APA, we did the second round, it costs the county to advertise, we did a second round, and we got, we didn't get even five applicants, and so we recognize the need for volunteers, and that's kind of the tenet by which Commissioner Corn is running through the community, trying to gather people, so recognize.
Real quick on that, as Commissioner Corn knows others that have been in the military, when you're in the military, you don't volunteer, so, but.
I don't know, that sounds like you're capturing people and requiring it, I don't know that we can do that, but we know that we need volunteers, how's that? I have to go Heisner, because her hand was up, and then I'll come to you.
Hi again, Teresa Heisner, Priest River. This is regarding Senate Bill 1065, that was presented by Tammy Nichols to the AG Committee, it's actually hung up in AG Committee regarding solar radiation modification and weather modification, and this is to prohibit unauthorized weather modification, solar radiation mitigation and enforcement, which is making, this topic is making its way across the country, there are a number of states that currently have legislation now on the books and/or in the process. So, I'm urging those of you, I think everyone should be concerned about it, and if you don't know about it, do some homework, because there are high levels of aluminum, barium, and strontium coming down in our rain, we have a ton of documentation. I'm urging everyone to contact the AG Department down in Boise and ask them for a hearing. We really need to have a hearing on this. Again, that's 1065, presented by Tammy Nichols, and it's currently, we're currently awaiting a hearing on that. Also, we're having a BANDU Engineering in Idaho meeting this Saturday at the Sandpoint Library at 3:00. For those of you that are new to the topic or want legislative updates, we encourage you to attend, and that's all I have. Thanks for listening to me, because I'm sick of listening to me.
All right.
Done, Teresa.
She's done, your name and county of residence.
Roger Spaulding, long time.
Welcome home.
Bonner County resident, she welcomed, we've been gone for three months, only thing we both have to say is, it's so nice to come back to a real Commissioner meeting, where things get done. We want to thank you, from a whole bunch of people in the county, thanks.
Thank you, sir. All right, Jennifer, while we were talking, Mr. Bowman sent a letter that has all of the people attached, so you don't have to do it, so we'll get that done, and then Chief Armstrong, we're good on the 18th, so we're doing a Commissioner chat to address that, and we'll publicize it, to make sure we get people involved, to communicate on fire and all the things that impact our emergency services, so he's going to get it done in 45 minutes, he's not going to talk long, he says, okay? All right, it is 11:37, and this meeting is adjourned.